To the agenda, from the board, any adjustments? This is very good agenda. Mr. Moakaraiske?
No.
And just one very slight one. We had a State of the County address last night. I'd like to thank everybody who participated in making that happen. It was a very successful event. And Mr. Moakaraiske, your staff performed in stellar fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda today is not one of my -- second item, not one of my items, you know, for the -- Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you Chair Farr. Well, one of the duties of, at least that I acknowledge as Vice Chair, is to be able to recognize the service of our current Chair for this past year. So it's my pleasure to be able to give to you the recognition plaque and gavel for your service and gratitude for your service as Board Chair for 2014.
Make sure it works.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I also took the priority to get you a small little thank you card here. Just greatly appreciate Pat, your service this year, your guidance, getting to work with you. You know, there's nothing like getting to know somebody than to attend a lot of meetings. And I really enjoyed working with you as your Vice Chair and leading the county to get our business done. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you Commissioner Stewart. The -- just in response, you know, it's been really a banner year. The year started out with our discussions regarding hiring a new county administrator. And one of the first things we did is the most important thing a board can do, I believe, is picking and hiring the correct county administrator. And Mr. Moakaraiske has done a great job of leading us into the future. The future begins today. We're at the start of what I believe is a great year for Lain County, coming off a great year for Lain County. A lot of work ahead of us. And I am a little bit choked up. And I've really enjoyed this portion of my service and I look forward to the next year. So thank you very much. So with that, we'll move along to the next item on the agenda, which is election of officers. First item is election of Chair for the Board of County Commissioners of 2015. I will take -- accept nominations at this point in time. Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bozovic for this next year. Commissioner Bozovic is newly elected to his second term and served on this board four years, then Vice Chair two times, and hasn't made it to the Chair seat. So I would nominate him to be Chair for 2015.
Second. Moved in seconded, any further nominations? Seeing, hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of Commissioner Bozovic, serving as Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Commissioner Bozovic, congratulations.
Thank you.
Take this, because you don't -- if you got that, you don't get this.
Yeah.
I'm leaving one item behind too. If you wish to use the gavel, public comment Friday.
Thank you.
I guess I could have slid over. I could have slid over.
Whoa, what a view, I love it. And Commissioner Farr can now claim to be on the far right of the board.
Wow. I've never been the far right of anything.
And the next item of business is the election of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair? Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Stewart as Vice Chair.
Second.
Any further nominations? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of Commissioner Stewart as Vice Chair, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair again. And moving on to public comments, we have one person signed up for public comment. And that person is Jan Aho. Aho, sorry, sorry.
Hi.
Aho. And we generally give people three minutes to try and keep the things moving along. I'll keep track and let you know, but if you'll just state your name and the city you're from for the record, please.
Jan Aho, I'm from Dexter, Oregon. I'm currently the Executive Director at Pearl Buck Center. I wanted to thank you Chairman Bozovic and Vice Chair Stewart and Commissioner Sorenson and Commissioner Lichen and Commissioner Farr. I'm here to just say thank you for your support of Human Services. Very often, we as providers come and talk to you about money. I'm here to talk to you about the investment that you've made in Human Services by your support of funding for the Human Services Commission, so that they can fulfill their mission, and I'm going to read it, "To promote and protect the health and well-being of all individuals, families, and communities in Lain County. I'd like to tell you one short story of a young girl who attended our preschool, which is receiving funding from the Human Services Commission. This was a self-portrait done by a little girl in 1997. She was a student at the preschool. She lived with a mom who had a developmental disability and who used our services to support her in parenting her child. And her child received a free preschool education so that she could enter school ready to learn." For this mom, who had parents who had parented a child with a disability, the support that we gave her was critical for so she could foster her child's development. This young girl did this picture of herself when she was four years old at the beginning of the last year that she was with us. She entered the school when she was two. She was with us when she was three. And this was the fall when she was four. It was our last year to work with her and to ensure that she was ready to enter school to learn. This picture, when I saw it, was her self-portrait. And I kind of was shocked. And I thought, we've got some work to do this year. So this little girl is ready to enter school. At the end of the year, this was her self-portrait. And what I saw was a little girl who was ready to take on the world. What I want to let you know is sometimes you don't know how your investment impacts the lives of a child and her mother. For this little girl, she's in her senior year at the University of Oregon, majoring in psychology. So she'll be joining us all next Monday as we cheer the ducks on. So I thank you for your support in the Human Services, knowing that these services are critical. Pearl Buck Center is just one of the many agencies that benefit from your support. So thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you Ms. Aho. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board during public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to Commissioner's response to public comments and/or other remonstrances. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, if that doesn't bring a tear to your eyes, nothing will. Ms. Aho, thank you very much. Just for the -- for folks who may not know, Jan has been with Pearl Buck for a lot of years. Before she was the CEO of Pearl Buck, she was in charge of the preschool. And really started and formed the preschool as it operates today and as it has operated. And this is just one single story of the many stories that passed through that preschool. Kids who come from families with parents who have cognitive disorders that otherwise may not get the type of precise attention that they'd receive at the preschool. If you go in that back door, they have a little back door back there that you can go in. Even I have to bend down a little bit to go in the door. And it really is an amazing service that you provide at Pearl Buck. And I had a chance to meet your board and have known your board -- many of your board members for some time. And it is, if you've not been to Pearl Buck, you really owe it to yourself to go and visit Jan. Jan, thank you very much for the work that you do. I see you every month at the Human Services Commission meeting and get to hear from you from time to time. So thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner Farr. Commissioner Lichen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Jan, thank you very much for being here. And as you know, my wife served on your board for many years. And so -- and I would agree with Commissioner Farr. It's just exciting to see just the growth. And so I want to thank you very much for what you and Pearl Buck does for our community. I just really, really appreciate it. I know it was for Debbie, it was really -- it was passion for her, as you know. And she really enjoyed serving on the board when she had that opportunity. And of course, Jeanne Savage has been kind of the savage. She's been a real stronghold of that board for so many years. But thank you, thank you very much. I think we really appreciate the -- just to hear a compliment for one. And really just the work our Human Services Commission and our staff throughout Lain County, Eugene Springfield, that we do for that. So thank you so much for sharing with us.
Thank you Commissioner Lichen. Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming today and talking with the board and the public about the importance of Human Services. And as you may know, this is the time of year when the Board of Commissioners is getting ready to send some budget instructions to the county administrator. Tomorrow morning, the Board of Commissioners is meeting with the senior officials, including the county administrator, department directors, to look over what our budget picture looks like and how much of our budget is actually going to be devoted to Human Services and how much is going to be devoted to other things. I'm really glad you came today because this is a great reminder that we're going into this. And as normal with budgets, they're challenging and there can be opportunities to improve, but there's also the challenge of the amount of money that we may be getting from the federal government or state government or even from our local taxpayers. So I appreciate you coming and I appreciate your years of dedicated service to the community. I'm really glad you're still doing that.
Commissioner Stewart. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Jan, it's already been said, but I just appreciate the great work that you do and really the incredible network of services that are provided in our community by a multitude of providers that recognize, you know, for us to have a healthy community, it's not just one aspect of it. It's not just great job opportunities or great education. It's a myriad of services that we have to address, you know, the items that are critical for us to be healthy and starting at the young age. I mean, can't imagine what that picture would look like if that individual child hadn't had your service, so -- and then opportunity to have that experience. So thank you so much for bringing that message today and showing how important the services that you and others provide. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Jan also for coming. I did get to tour your facility. Kate Bergman, former fellow employee at E-Web invited me and I came and had a very nice tour of the facility to get to duck through that door. And it's a great facility and I really appreciate it having a stepbrother who was developmentally disabled. I appreciate the services that Pearl Buck provides. It's a great agency. I'd like to spend a minute and maybe talk a little bit about what I'm looking forward to this year. You know, Pat got to talk quite a bit last night about what he wants to see over the next year. But yeah, I was asked by the Saugus Law News, you know, what my New Year's resolution was, you know, for this year. And what I told them was it was about being more resilient. And not only individually, but trying to get my family to be more resilient and also to get the county to be more resilient. You know, individually, I'm going to do things like I'm watching my diet and trying to get a little bit more exercise so I'll be healthier and more prepared for those emergencies and the ups and downs of life. With my family, I'm trying to make sure that I'm taking those personal steps to be ready for a natural disaster or a downturn in the economy, like, you know, putting a little bit of money away in savings, trying to make sure we've got some food set aside, making sure we've got water set aside, even looking at alternate sources of heating and energy for my house and home. In fact, we are having a generator, you know, installed at our house after last year's ice storm. So those are things I can do personally. I really want to encourage the citizens of Lain County to do the same thing. Last year, there was a report issued on the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake by the Governor's Office about how Oregon might survive that. And I would challenge anybody to look at that report and not be absolutely appalled at what we might have to endure should we have that 9.0 earthquake on the subduction zone. We'd be looking in the Wlamet Valley at spending months without services like water, sewer, electricity, transportation. We have to be prepared to take care of ourselves for a short while, at least until we can get help from the outside. So I strongly encourage the people of Lain County to take the steps to make sure your family will not be a victim of an actual disaster, that your family's prepared. Along with that, we need to get Lain County to be more prepared for, you know, natural disaster, economic upheaval, you know, all of that. And we need to look at how we're going to make Lain County be more prepared for those things. And part of that is making sure we keep our road system in the best shape we can absolutely keep it, that we've got a public safety system that's ready to respond in those emergencies and it's adequately funded. And that we're looking for ways that are going to be long-term solutions to our funding crisis. Instead of going through this annual cycle of waiting to see if we get several schools updated or refunded in some sort of way and looking towards Capitol Hill and Washington, DC to rescue us in our budget annually, we have to be, you know, starting to look at how are we going to be, you know, sound in the long term and be prepared for those emergencies? Because those emergencies are coming. We're overdue right now for the next Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake when you look at the geological time span. So that's what I'm going to be concentrating on personally this year is how we can become more resilient as a county, how my family can be more prepared, and how I can personally be more prepared. And I'm hoping that I can lead Lain County and the citizens to be ready for that next natural disaster or economic downturn so that we'll be ready to survive. And I look forward to this year's -- I hope my board members will assist me as they assisted previous chairs in keeping the meeting on track or when I mix things up a little bit.
You have three minutes, Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. And I will try and keep the meetings moving, make sure everybody gets their opportunities to have input, including the public. And I look forward to this year. And thank you very much to the board for allowing me this honor to lead them for the year.
With that, we'll move on in the agenda. Emergency business, any emergency business?
We have no emergency business, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Then we'll move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is a list of items that we pass without discussion. You can look at the list online at laincounty.org and each item is detailed there. I will say, I found out this week, if you upgrade iOS 8 on an iPad or an iPhone and you don't have Chrome, you won't be able to get the links to work live. So unfortunately Safari doesn't support our links. So I had to load Chrome this morning. So is there a motion for the consent calendar? Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. So we'll move on from there. Pages to turn. Health and Human Services. We have a first reading and setting the second reading and public hearing for ordinance 14-20 in the matter of amending Lain Code Chapter 18 to revise the ambulance service area plan. We have Alicia Hayes with us and Karen Gacken.
First, I wanted to know, what am I loading, Commissioner, to get the link? Thanks for sharing that. I was wondering why I wasn't getting it. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm going to turn it over to Karen, who's going to present.
Good morning. Excuse me, Chair Bozovic and Commissioners, and we don't have a presentation for you per se this morning because it's a first reading. We certainly are prepared to come back on the second reading. This item is mostly to take care of some housekeeping items, to make sure that the language around our ambulance service plan matches the maps that El Cog has for the county and also to add a new ambulance service area. I'm happy to answer any questions and certainly will come back with a presentation and second reading.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, is there a motion? I guess I do have a question. Is the second reading set for the 27th or 20th?
What a great question. That isn't in this packet, is it? 27th is your next available opportunity. So yes, that would be my request to set up for the 27th.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Sorenson.
I was just going to ask, is that set up already as a board day?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Because there are no down weeks in January.
Actually, there is.
Oh, okay.
20th, 21st, 20th, 22th.
Okay. Thanks.
So, Mr. Chair, with that information, I'd like to move the first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for ordinance 14-20 in the matter of amending Lain Code Chapter 18 to revise the ambulance service area plan, setting the second reading for and public hearing for January 27th in Harrisaw. Does it need a time certain?
We do not need a time certain.
Second.
The move been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to County Council. Any announcements from County Council? Doesn't look like we have any today. I don't believe we have necessary need for an executive session today. Second item under County Council is the second reading and public hearing for ordinance 14-07 in the matter of amending -- I'm sorry. So is that -- oh, sorry. Thank you. See, they're already helping me. That's 10:30. So we'll move -- we'll skip that and move on down to Public Works. And this is item 9A, Order 15010614 in the matter of amending Lain Manual Chapter 60 to revise animal services fees. And we have Tanya Heaton and Mike Russell. Looks like we have Mike Russell. So Mike, I'll turn this over to you.
Good morning, Chair Bozovic. Mike Russell, Parks and Animal Services Manager. Item before you this morning is a request to revise the fees in Lain Code. The last comprehensive fee update for Lain County Animal Services was received, reviewed and approved in 2004. There have been some selective fees that have been revised in 2010 and 2011, but this is the first kind of comprehensive review and revision of those fees. We assessed the appropriate levels and in accordance with good public policy while minimizing barriers and encouraging utilization of the services. We are recommending this increase. Generally, fees charged for animal services program are minimized to encourage participation of licensing program and adoption of animals. We don't want to put a so high a price on animal licensing that we prevent people from wanting to license their animals. That being said, it's been over 10 years since the last comprehensive fee increase, which, as you know, has created pressure on the program. There's no additional service being proposed or restored with this fee change. Rather, Public Works staff has reviewed the fees and the request is to help match cost of service increase and provide some flexibility in existing services. The Financionative Committee reviewed the proposed changes on December 11th and approved a recommendation to move it toward to the board. So that's why we're here this morning. Pet licenses are the top revenue generating fee for animal services program and are the greatest assistance to the community's health. The license provides officials, neighbors, and community members with the ability to help an animal find its way home. It also helps us in responding to animal neglect cases, helps fund, you know, providing temporary shelter or food or whatever we may need to help assist with in those cases. The fee proposal also -- the fee proposal also makes Lain County licensing rates consistent with what the city of Eugene is currently charging. And we see this as just generally good practice to keep up with our other partner jurisdictions to reduce confusion among pet owners and vendors and staff and processing license purchases and may facilitate discussion of some kind of centralized licensing model, which the Lain County Animal Services Advisory Committee has talked about and I believe you're aware of. So the table on page three summarizes the fee changes. Just quickly, for an unaltered dog, for one-year license, it goes from $35 to $42. Generally, across the board, about a 20% increase in fees. Your options are to approve the recommendation of increasing the fees or not to. Staff is recommending that you do. If you do, the fees would become effective. And budget adjustments would be processed in the next supplemental request. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Questions for staff? Commissioner Stewart. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mike, for the report. A couple of questions specific to it. So I see that you can buy a multi-year, three-year, hypothetically three-year license and it's at a considerable savings. It looks like it's about $12 if you go with that. So let's say I sign up for it and I buy that and some unfortunate accident happens to my dog. Is there any way to recover maybe the unused portion of that? Or is it just that you bought it? I mean...
I don't know if I've -- specifically, I'm into that case. I don't know. I think we would work with the person and try to work with them. We've had situations where people have bought licenses in other counties and then moved here and they want credit for that. We have not honored that because obviously we have our own program here and they have to license the dog in Lain County. But in that situation, I guess we just have to review each case and make a decision. So something to think about. Then my second question was, is I noticed this is all really kind of tailored to dogs and cats. I was curious, recently, we've had conversations about larger animals, specifically horses. Was there any review of the fees that would pertain to horses? And I guess, I guess the question would be, are there fees?
Yeah.
And then after where they reviewed and the situation, I would, you know, in one instance, we, that I'm aware of, you had to find a home for an animal that needed to be cared for and health improved. Is there some sort of a fee that falls back on the owner that would help pay for that? Okay. So a couple of questions there. No, we don't license cats. It's mainly, it's all dogs do the licensing. And there's been discussion at the Advisory Committee about licensing cats, but there are specific issues with that.
Is there a cat licensing fee here?
There is, and it's voluntary.
Okay.
So it's not mandatory, like the dog licensing. As far as large animals, when we respond to a neglect case, as long as the owner is known, the costs for dealing with that situation are all the responsibility of the owner. So any vet visits, food regimen, that kind of thing, that's all taken on and it's responsibility of the animal owner to cover those costs.
Can you mandate the vet visit and everything and then?
Yes.
And coordinate that the owner pays for it?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Russell, thank you very much. But you know, I sit in the meetings of the Animal Advisory Committee and listen to the way you make your presentations. I really like to compliment you on the job that you do. You're really -- I was going to say, you're hurting cats, but it really is admirable, the work that you do on a very limited budget. And we have two veterinarians on the committee and a really dedicated board of committee members. And they have a lot to talk about. I just wanted to talk about one thing that we have spoken about in that committee and I didn't, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know where, how things have been progressing. But regarding a county-wide dog licensing program. Now, part of the program is that we need to -- Now, part of the problem that we have with dog licensing is that not very many people pay any attention to it. Most people don't license their dog, for whatever reason. And there's a really good, there are lots of really good reasons to license your dog. Not only recovery, but just safety in general. So, the reasons are outlined by the Animal Services Advisory Committee quite often. And something that I'd like to talk about as we move through this year perhaps is how do we move toward a countywide licensing fee? It used to, formerly vets were able to issue the licenses throughout the county. Currently, vets, I believe, aren't doing any licensing.
No, we have about 20.
About 20.
20 vendors across the county.
But the problem that's been pointed out is that we have different municipalities that have different regulations, different fee structures, different forms to fill out. And if we had something countywide, it would be more, well, easier for people to license their dogs. It's easier to know that they could just go down to any vet in the county, license their dog with a simple form, order it online. It's the same form, no matter what municipality that you're in or if you live in a rural area. Now, the city of Eugene has its own program that is fairly robust. And that being said, I would like to mention to the board that it's something the Animal Advisory Committee has talked about and probably will talk about in this current year. And while it's not an easy discussion to have, and it's not going to be something that is universally accepted or enthusiastically supported, it is something that I would encourage that we look at and move toward for the future. Thank you, Mr. Russell. And if you would like to comment on that.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's something the committee is very energetic about. Not only do you kind of make licensing uniform in the county, but make it more convenient for animal owners to go anywhere, buy one license, and they don't have to determine whether they live in the city of Eugene or the city of Florence or Lane County. They just buy one license and the money is routed wherever it needs to go according to whatever agreements that there are. So, I think that there's definitely energy behind that and something to pursue.
And I would recall the John Cleese statement regarding licensing. And you don't have to license our bee or a half a bee or a cat, Eric, but if you listen to Monty Python, it's a nice get on dog licensing. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wasn't the, one of the major reasons why we developed the contract with Green Hill is because the county used to do most of the work for the city of Eugene, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
And then the city of Eugene just recently, what, three years ago, I think, developed their own licensing and enforcement program, pretty much copied the city of Springfield, which has been doing that for many, many years. So, I wish you the best of luck in talking to the city of Springfield on a countywide licensing program. I'm sure they'll invite you in and then escort you out. So, as you well know, that'll be a very, very tough sell in the city of Springfield on that one. And I think because overall, the city feels like it's been very, very successful. And I don't think they really want to touch, but I would be open to at least that discussion. But that's probably, I have a funny feeling, it's probably not going to be a very successful conversation with the city of Springfield on this one, partly because it's been in place for many years and I think they feel very, very comfortable where it's going. At least, the last time I spoke to the city manager and Mayor Lombard, they felt like even the work with Green Hill has been, has been successful and they've enjoyed that partnership. So, but I, you know, I think Commissioner Farr brings up something. I would entertain the idea of having that dialogue, but I don't expect it to go very far in the city of Springfield.
Commissioner Farr.
Just a brief follow-up. The city of Springfield does have a great program, and it's not out of the question that the city of Springfield's program would just bleed into the entire county, you know, as the discussion moves forward, because they do a very good job. And if Oak Ridge and Eugene and Florence and all cities had a similar program, I think, more specifically, the rural, you know, we have a lot of issues with animals in rural areas. So, Commissioner Lichen, you point out that Springfield does a good job already. They do. There's no doubt about that. Thank you.
So, I'd like to insert myself in the queue here for a minute. And I'd have to, you know, having been liaison to the Animal Services Committee prior to Commissioner Farr taking that over for me, there's been a long-term discussion about what are the barriers to licensing and how to get folks to license their animals so we can get a higher compliance rate, which in turn will give us more resources to make sure we get return to owner and live release rates, you know, maintain that high above 90% live release rate that we have at the First Avenue Shelter. And one of the barriers that was determined, and I want to really appreciate David Calderwood, who went above and beyond as a member of the committee and did a lot of personal research, hours and hours of personal research about this issue, is having multiple jurisdictions issuing licenses and trying to make it as convenient as possible to the animal owner, you know, to license, whether they license at a county or city office, or they license at their vet's office, or maybe even at PetSmart, you know, that, you know, if we could have a countywide system with today's ability to write computer programs that, you know, you register your pet and you give a home address. The home address identifies the jurisdiction you're in. It doesn't change the fact that Springfield has its own animal authority and all that stuff. We just make sure Springfield gets the money for that license if they have a Springfield in-city address. If they have a Eugene in-city address, Eugene gets that money, if it's county, if it's Florence, whatever. But the fact that they could go anywhere, not worry about what city limit they're in and whatever, and just license their animal would be the objective here. Not necessarily to have the county take over Springfield's animal services. It's just about trying to get a uniform system for licensing that removes that barrier and makes it simple for people to license. And that will increase the compliance, because I think our current compliance rate is in 37%? 34%? 34%? You know, you can imagine what we could do if we could get double that up to 68% for the First Avenue Shelter, which, you know, we've had other discussions about the facility needs for that shelter also. And I would really encourage the citizens of Lane County that might be watching this, that pet license is like taping, you know, when I was a kid, you know, they used to tape a dime in your shoe or something like that when you were really little. This is back when they had payphones and they were only a dime, because that was how you ended up coming home if you got lost somewhere. You know, you had a dime and phone number, you know, your home phone number in there. That pet license is like that dime. You know, if your dog gets picked up and has a license on it, it will get returned to you without even getting to the shelter most times. You know, it comes straight back to your home and not have to spend the night. And that's, you know, a really important aspect of licensing your animal and what it does for homeless animals, the revenue. So, I think this, you know, it's a good thing to be looking at this every so many years. I really appreciate the fact that we're trying to keep the price down, because that was one of the other barriers they're concerned about, is making sure it's an affordable license. But easy to get is the other barrier, and I think we need to work on that throughout the year. So, I really appreciate that. Interesting now that a three-year license is about the same as a two-year vehicle registration fee. Just to kind of put things in perspective, myself having three dogs, it does add up, but I, you know, I get all my animals licensed because I know if they do get out, that's their dime, you know, to get home. So, any other questions for staff? Do I have a motion?
I have moved to accept Order 15010614 in the matter of amending Lane Manual Chapter 60 to revise animal services fees.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item 9B. First reading and setting the second reading in public hearing for ordinance 15-01 in the matter of amending the Lane Code Chapter 15 to adopt a vehicle registration fee if approved by Lane County voters in May 2015. And we have Lydia McKenny and I think Bill Morgan here from Public Works.
And, Mr. Chair, as Lydia and Bill come up and get settled here, I'll just mention to the board that the way we'd like to do this today is Lydia will provide an overview, and we've sort of been going back to the beginning of the process at looking at road funding. So, you have a little bit of the history and everyone who's watching has a recap of the history and the process that we've gone through, the recommendation from our citizen advisory panel to where we are today. We'll ask for your consideration, an introduction and first reading and setting of a second reading. And then if you vote to move that forward after that discussion, we also have a brief discussion related to a voter pamphlet or informational pamphlet on the issue that we'd like some direction from after you take action on the first reading.
Thank you. Ms. McKenny.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Chair Bozovic, commissioners, good morning. We're here today again to have this continued discussion on a proposed vehicle registration fee. And as Steve Mokraheisky mentioned specifically, we're here today to ask you to set a second reading and public hearing on an ordinance to adopt a fee if approved by the voters in May. I will give a brief background before I close this discussion. So, this is, as I said, it's our sixth meeting, I believe, in the last four months on this item. In August, you, the board, directed staff to work with our citizen advisory committee, the Roads Advisory Committee, to seek ways to restore revenue to our shrinking road funds. We have heard for years, and the board has recognized, that the county has made significant cuts, and we're at the point, the tipping point now that we've reached where we really need to be able to generate a new source of revenue to be able to address our road fund issues. And really, what we're specifically looking for is an ongoing source of funding for maintenance and preservation of safe roads and bridges. The board wants the Public Works staff to continue to invest wisely in our $6 billion assets of roads and bridges by paying now to keep the roads in good condition for safe passage, rather than paying significantly more later. We specifically noted that the solution should be a regional one, that the road challenges are not just a county issue, but it's an issue that is shared by our partner cities. The Roads Advisory Committee, the Citizen Committee, discussed a number of options in great detail, including other means such as county bonds and gas taxes. After analyzing and discussing the most promising options, the Citizen Committee came back and recommended that the board consider pursuit of a vehicle registration fee. That was a unanimous recommendation from the Citizen Committee. And then the board unanimously directed staff at the subsequent meeting to continue doing research.
McKenny, can you hold up a second? I think you've killed her mic to the point I can't. It may be difficult for audience to hear. I'm not sure what noise we're picking up that's coming over the system, or we got a woodpecker in the corner here.
Let's play these guys right here.
That's better.
That's good?
Much better. Thank you.
Want me to start again?
No. Can you pick up where you left off?
I'll sit on my hands. Okay. So, continuing, the Board discussed a variety of options in detail, including a variety of different options, and they have recommended to you to continue the pursuit of a vehicle registration fee as the best option. When you directed staff to continue doing research, one of the things that we did is we hired a polling forum to gauge the public's response to a modest fee increase. And according to our consultant, who, as we know, has a very good reputation, a very high rate of success with these types of questions, he's indicated that the significant majority of the voters would prefer to pay a modest increase as opposed to seeing additional service cuts. So, then the board directed us to discuss the proposal and to work with our regional partners, the 12 cities within Lane County. And again, just as a reminder for us all, one of the reasons that this is a regional solution is that if we pass a vehicle registration fee, 60% of the funds would remain with Lane County, but 40% of the dollars from that fee would be distributed to our partner cities. So, we went back, we met with 10 of the 12 cities prior to the 16th meeting, the board's 16th meeting, and we had a significant majority of the cities who recommended the board continue to pursue this option. And we're very clear that the support directed to the board and what we've heard from the board is to place this on the ballot so that the voters can decide this in May. So, at the 16th, staff, you also directed staff to return today for the first reading, which is what we're doing. And then you had some other questions. And as Steve Mokraheisky indicated, what we're going to ask for now is you to have the discussion and determine whether you do want to set a second reading and public hearing for January 27th. That is what we're recommending. If the board chooses to go in that direction, then I'll have a couple of follow-up things to discuss with you with regards to voters pamphlet, information for voters, how we would do that, and other public information strategies. So, with that, I think I'll close this portion of the discussion. Thank you very much.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Sorensen.
I'm very interested in the idea of having a fair election wherein the voters are presented with the opportunity to have a voter's pamphlet and that they have the opportunity to put information in the pamphlet, both pro and against, pro and con, on the measure. I heard that there was a plan to have a discussion of this after the board would approve placing it on the ballot. I'm wondering if you could reassure me that there will be a voter's pamphlet and what time would the public have an opportunity to submit arguments in favor and against so that the public is involved in the election and has an opportunity?
Mr. Chair.
I'm kind of hearing that, you said, Steve, in particular, we might have an informational pamphlet, and that's exactly what I have been asking questions about for several months, to have a voter's pamphlet.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Sorensen, we, in discussions with county council, wanted to have this discussion over the first reading and introduction of the ordinance. And then once you decide that issue, to provide the board the option of either voter pamphlet or an informational pamphlet and simply give you the facts so that you understand what both of those are. We, at the staff level, were intrigued at both the difference of cost as well as what is included and what would be included in a Lane County informational packet, including arguments for and against, and as well as some of the challenges with the voter pamphlet, given the cost and the time and the length of that voter's pamphlet, because you'd have to include all of the candidates for office in that election as well as any other ballot measures. At the end of the day, it'll be up to the board to provide us direction, but we will be looking for direction on that matter, whether you'd like to pursue a voter pamphlet or informational packet. We're prepared to do either, but we're simply sort of at the stage that we need to work with our election staff to give that direction and start the wheels in motion to make either of those things happen.
And if I could just clarify, this discussion will happen this morning. So, again, we're just asking for the second reading and public hearing to be acted upon, and then I will stay up here as long enough as I'm invited and we can continue that discussion.
So, you're making the point that this discussion today is about whether or not the board sets a public hearing on whether to send this out to voters?
Correct. And then if we do that, then in the minute afterwards, we can just start discussing the voter's pamphlet, just the information.
Okay. I think that's a good clarification. And we have heard a lot of positive energy about this issue, both from the social science research on what are public attitudes. We've also heard a lot of positive feedback from the city officials. I think that's fair to say. And we really have not heard much in opposition, at least formal opposition, to this. I did want to burrow in on another topic, and that is, the last time we were here, I recall asking about whether we could narrow down the purpose of this. And I asked that because the survey work that was done indicated that people are more willing to vote for this fee if they know what the fee will be used for. And we had narrowed it to road and bridge maintenance. We had taken off road construction as an example of narrowing it. I asked if there were sufficient number of bridges that need to be repaired and that the amount of money from this fee would be sufficient to pay for narrowing the purpose of it to pay for bridges. I'm kind of getting maybe an assumption that it costs more to repair roads than I'm kind of getting maybe an assumption that it costs more to repair roads than in total than bridges, and that there's not enough money in this whole package to do both roads and bridges. So my idea was, well, can we narrow this to one particular type of expense that we have so that when we ask the voters, do you want to vote for this, we can say it's for bridges, or it's for roads? Can you comment on that and the relative dollar amounts involved in maintaining bridges as opposed to maintaining roads compared to the amount of money that will likely be raised?
Yes, Commissioner Sorenson, Chair Bozovic, the discussion about, well, I'll say, the Public Work Department's request is really to have a fund for maintenance and preservation of both roads and bridges. I don't think we've really had much discussion about or really thought about trying to separate those things. We haven't said, you know, this is what our bridges would cost, and this is what our roads would cost. We really do look at this as a connected system. So if there is, and again, we want to have some flexibility with these funds, which are constitutionally designated for road use only. We want to be able to, if there is a road issue, there's a landslide, for instance, at the coast, that we'd be able to use the funds to go out and clear the road. Similarly, if there was a bridge challenge that arose, we would want to be able to have the flexibility to address that. So again, we haven't really had a discussion or thought about separating roads and bridges. What we have continually stated, and we will continue to move forward with, is Lane County has committed that we will use this funding for maintenance and preservation to keep our roads safe. And so that includes things like overlays and chip seals, you know, cutting vegetation on the sides of the road, making sure that our stormwater management system is functional so that those roads remain open. That is the focus of the Lane County, use of those funds.
Mr. Liken was in the queue, and then Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lydia Bill, first of all, I want to say thank you to both of you for the work you've been doing on this. I really appreciate that pretty much. Couple of questions, and here's, I think the comment feedback I've been receiving from folks is that, and I think I really, excuse me, voice still not quite there. So I think it's really going to come down to the educational side of it. And what's common is that, well, exactly where's this money going to go to? And I think you've explained it pretty well from the county's side, but it's interesting because the other piece that I've received is, well, what can the cities actually do with this? Now, the way the law is written, are they able to use it for capital, or is this really towards operation and maintenance for the cities? And that's a question I actually do not know. And I don't know if you can expand on that, on that piece of it or not, because my district is mostly urban. I think that's the question that comes out. And so when they see the, potentially, the $1.2 million coming back to Springfield, exactly what does that mean? I think we would have a very, a much better opportunity explaining that this is really about the preservation of our infrastructure in a sense. So I don't know if you can expand on that or not, especially regarding the cities.
Sure. There isn't a limitation specifically to maintenance and preservation of these funds. The funds are limited to road purposes only. So the way that we're currently moving forward with this, there isn't a limitation on the cities. In fact, I think we've discussed this before, and county councils indicated that we cannot tell the cities they can only use it for maintenance and preservation. Our conversations with most cities, especially the larger cities, it's our understanding that that, again, is the big need that they have, as well as the need that we have. But theoretically, it could be, it could be used for capital road projects if the cities were interested in doing that. Some of the smaller cities, some of the things that they were discussed with us when we met with them was, could we use this money to leverage for a grant, to be able to get a larger amount of money to come in and do a larger road project? And the answer to that is yes, as long, again, as you're leveraging it for grant money for roads, they could do that. So allowing the cities the flexibility to be able to use, again, the road funds, they're limited to the road purposes, that the different cities have different needs. And so, again, we've been very clear that the county needs, and we are committed to use these funds for maintenance and preservation. Most of what we've heard from the cities is that they have the same types of needs, but again, there is some flexibility. So if a place like West Fer, which might have a road fund that gets larger year after year because they don't have a lot of road projects, they could partner with Lane County, for instance, and we could work together to bring more money for a bigger project in their region. So we do have that flexibility currently.
That's helpful. I appreciate that. And I know that even when I left the city of Springfield as mayor, the backlog had begun to really build up some, and I think it's continuing to build up on the preservation side. And I've heard from the leadership from the city of Springfield, their plan is, if this passes, and if, well, first of all, if we vote to approve and refer to the voters, that ultimately they'd be using it for the preservation side. So I don't want to get ahead of myself on that one, when it strikes the imagination. One last question, and that is kind of the voter's pamphlet piece of it. I think what would be very helpful is that on, because it's an odd year, so it's 2015, it's not 2016. So if you might be able to supply us with other candidates, this type of thing that's actually going to be on the ballot, I think that would be extremely helpful going forward. I think we're, and obviously, we may not be there yet, but I think we're, how I'm beginning to see more and more is that people are beginning to get more and their information online. I know we get voter's pamphlet at my house. I'm not sure I've read one in three years. I just don't. Most of the information I get is basically online. So, but I think it would be helpful just to find out what else is out there in May of 2015. Because I'm concerned about the expense side of this going forward. I think making sure we, the education, the information is out there for the public would be very, very important. But at the same time, I do get concerned about the expense side and where that goes. So it'd be helpful to kind of see what else is out there on the ballot in 2015. That would be helpful for me as we go forward, and ultimately, we have to make a decision on that. Thank you.
So I would note, Chair Bozovic, Commissioner Liken, that the understanding that we have from the county clerk is that there are 200 candidates and 66 special districts that are eligible for a vote this May. Right. So the difference really between a voter's pamphlet, a formal voter's pamphlet, and what we're recommending, which is an informational pamphlet for voters, is that if we go with a formal voter's pamphlet, we have to, the county would have to open it up for those 200 candidates and 66 districts. They would be able to submit statements and for the candidates' photographs into that pamphlet, which would significantly increase the size, the cost. We would actually have to go outside to bring in staff resources to be able to review that, and so the time is rather challenging for our clerk's office. So again, that's why we were intrigued, this idea about an informational pamphlet, which can look exactly, it will be Lane County's pamphlet, it will have information about the fee, and we will open it up so that people can provide those for and against arguments. So it should have that same sort of robust amount of information. If it pleases the board, I could go into some detail about other public information strategies, but I'll wait to hear if you want more detail.
Very good. That is extremely helpful. Thank you. So Mr. Bozovic is just reminding me about the school board, and I kind of forgot about that. So thank you for that. Thank you.
And if I can interject on process for a minute here, we'll discuss public information in that after this, because the staff does need a little bit of direction from us at this time on that. But let's deal with that after we finish discussing whether or not we're going to approve this first reading on the actual ordinance, so we don't mix our topics here. Because what we're really doing here today is a process that's described in Lane County Charter, which is, you know, to get an ordinance approved, we have to read it first in public at least 13 days before we actually hold a public hearing, and then have a second vote to approve that ordinance. In this case, all we're doing today is looking at either approving that first reading or requesting staff to, you know, not approving the first reading and killing the process at this point, or maybe possibly requesting staff to revise the ordinance in some way and coming back for a second reading. So that's really what's before us at this time, and I'd like to postpone the discussion of voter's pamphlet till we finish this process, so we don't mix our processes. With that, Commissioner Farr was in the queue, and I'm putting myself in the queue after Commissioner Farr.
And thanks for that last clarification, Mr. Chair. You know, that's one thing I was going to say, we'll have an opportunity to talk about voter's pamphlets. I'm in favor of voter's pamphlet, but I'm ready to hear what the pros and cons are, including who, I've always paid to put my name in a voter's pamphlet, so where does that money go to when I pay that? So I have that question. But really, as we move forward with this, I have a couple of questions. You know, the city of Eugene has recently passed two bonds that provide for maintenance on city roads, and a certain amount of this money will go to the city of Eugene, city of Springfield, and other municipalities. So the city of Eugene has always made a point of specifically identifying the projects that they will be spending the money on, absolutely specifically identifying. And I've had a few things to say when people ask me about that, and I wonder if you could talk about why we would not specifically identify projects?
Certainly. What we've talked about is, well firstly, the challenge for the county in identifying projects is, to some degree, our size. As we've noted a number of times, we're nearly the size of Connecticut, so we have over 1,400 miles, not road miles, miles of roads. We need to be able to keep some flexibility to be able to respond to needs as they arise. Again, I mentioned landslides, clearing of snow, these types of things. But as we've had this discussion with the board and with our community as well, and the cities, we do hear that there is a lot of interest in the city of Eugene, has been very successful with identifying specific projects. And so what we've committed to, and the county engineer can speak to this further, is that we will, and we are in identifying sort of the top 10, if you will, county roads. One of the things that people forget is that we have a lot of roads that just aren't out in the wine country, you know, River Road, Airport Road, Northwest Expressway, you know, these are county roads. And so we want to be able to be clear with our communities, you know, and Springfield is the same holds true.
Is Beltline Road a county road?
Beltline Road is not a county road. It is a state road. That would be ODOTs. The Delta Highway is a county road. So again, we want to make sure that we're clear with the public. So we would identify the types of roads that we see as priority roads. And then as well, we would look at providing the information on the types of projects. So again, I mentioned chip seals and overlays, which I'm very used to talking about now. Maybe the public isn't as familiar, but just in terms of, we'll provide information about what types of means we have to do the maintenance and preservation of the roads. So that would be information that we would provide.
Thank you for that. And, you know, each of us had an opportunity to speak to different city councils throughout the county. And Commissioner Sorenson and I sat over here and talked to the Eugene City Council, and that particular issue did come up. The question was raised by the Eugene City Council, would you identify specific projects? And at the same, at that time, you responded exactly the same way. The projects are pretty wide, and they count at the size of Connecticut, or slightly larger than the country of Wales. So it's, I think that's an accurate statement anyway. So it's, you know, really important to differentiate the fact that sometimes in the rural areas, there's more likelihood that there'll be a slide occur, or a catastrophic event, which more likely would affect a bridge. You know, if a road has a problem, probably can drive around it. If a bridge has a problem, you're stuck. So it's important to, and that as we move forward, people understand that we would love to identify specific projects, but it's not real easy to do such. The nature of products, the type of projects, I think, is far more, far more likely and far more understandable, as far as I'm concerned at least. But I really want to point out the good job that you did, and that Commissioners Bozovic and Stuart in particular did, in reaching out to the other cities, the municipalities in the area, because they do receive part of the funds. And when the people in those cities, if we pass this first reading, it goes to second reading, and we put it on the ballot, urban people, folks who live inside city limits, will have an opportunity to vote on this. In fact, most of the people in Lane County live inside city limits. And it's important to understand that this is not just roads outside of the city limits. This is also, that road right out there, Oak Street, which is in the city of Eugene, it's also in the county, and the city of Eugene receives its road fund from the county. And so, you know, the money that people will be looking at will also apply to the roads right in front of their, in front of their doorstep, as well as the roads between here and Walton. So it's important that we make certain that people fully understand, and I know that that's going to be a part of the effort, should we move forward in putting this on the ballot, to make sure that people understand where the money comes from, where it goes, and that in the, at the end of the, at the end of the day, we will have a full account of exactly how the money is spent and where the money goes. And it's really interesting to note that cities will have a great deal of latitude as far as how they use the money, leveraging against grant, for grant money. That's a great way to double, triple, quadruple, 10 times the money that people vote for. So I'm looking forward to the discussion. I'm going to learn a lot as we move forward with this, should we go to second reading and should we go beyond that. And I'm really excited about the possibility that people will have a chance to know what's a county road, what's a state road, what's a city road, and how they all overlap to make it a safe trip from the top of the Three Sisters all the way to the Surf and the mouth of the Sioux River, and everything in between. So thank you very much for the hard work that you've done on this. You guys have been working on this a long time, and it's not easy. I know the Roads Advisory Committee had a robust discussion about it, and you got a lot of different opinions from the, from the committee, as we would hope and expect. So I thank you for the presentation, and I'm looking forward to the vote on this, and I hope we're able to move this to a second reading. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. Mr. Clark, if you want to step up to the table, my question discussion has got some legal questions. As I discussed earlier, we're talking about a first reading today, and there is the possibility that one of the things the board could do is amend the ordinance or some of the language in the attached charter amendments, and then, and ask for a second reading, and then we'd have to go to a third reading and public hearing. If we do an amendment today, can we have that second reading next week?
Yes, you can, assuming that we can get it online quickly.
If it's a fairly minor amendment, and then we could have that second reading next week and still set the third reading public hearing for January 27th.
Right. Because you'd have at least 13 days.
Have the 13 days between readings per our charter, which dates back to the days when you used to have to post laws on the town square, so people had time to actually read that law, if people want to know. Nowadays, it's posting it on the internet, so they have time to read it. Thank you, because one of the things I see here, and this is for the board members to consider, is I'm a little concerned that, yes, we are constitutionally constrained about only spending this money on roads, and one of the issues for a lot of people that I've been talking with is they really don't want to see us building new facilities with this fee. And we don't clearly say that in the Lane Code that's attached to this. It seems to me it'd be very simple to add to 15.678, number four, which is use of net revenue and fees collected under section 15.67 to 15.682 by county and cities receiving distributions is subject to the limits and requirements provided by state law, to add a following sentence to that that basically says, county use of net revenue will be, or shall be restricted to maintenance and operation of existing facilities and shall not be used for new facilities or new capacity. You know, it'd be a very simple sentence to add, and we can't constrain the cities, which is, you know, we're not, that's one thing we can't do, is restrain, constrain the city's use of this, but we can constrain the 60% that the counties, and by the way, we're doing all the administrative work in that 60%. The cities aren't paying any of it out of their 40%, which is clearly in the code there. So after administrative costs, you know, having that clearly restricted operation, maintenance of existing facilities will meet that desire by the citizens, and I think addressed Commissioner Sorenson's question, at least for the counties, we, you know, we are not legally able to constrain the cities. Is that, you know, I see you step up, so you probably have something to say about that.
Sure. And I'll mention that Ms. McKinney's initial draft had that limitation built into the code. We've talked about it kind of back and forth, whether it provides more flexibility not to have the language, with the language in, opposite, you've got that limitation in. If you want to change it, you've got to go through the ordinance process. That is, to go beyond simply maintenance work, you'd have to change the code back to the way it is now. You could do that, the board could do that through its normal ordinance process, reading, second reading, and hearing. You wouldn't have to, I don't think, have another vote on the ordinance. So that's pretty likely.
So that's perfectly easy to do. My only, and the reason I came up with my recommendation is to, rather than opinion the language exactly as you've stated, essentially have the board provide guidance to staff to re, or add language that accomplishes that purpose and will do the wordsmithing.
Yeah, that would be, my preference would be to have legal and public works staff do the wordsmithing. I was just trying to make a recommendation of what that might read. You know, when I, it might be that you define maintenance as, you know, including any sort of major repair and renewal of existing facilities, because one of the things I want to stay away from is this, this issue of whether it's a capital project or not. I ran multiple capital projects at Eugene Water and Electric Board where we were actually just doing renewal and replacement of existing facilities, no increase in capacity at all. But it gets to be such a large project, it goes on the capital side rather than the maintenance side of the spending ledger. That distinction isn't what people are really concerned about. What they're concerned about is, we don't want you passing this fee and then building new facilities that then we don't have the money to maintain. They want us to keep this fee for maintaining what we have now in a safe condition. And that's really what people are, you know, the people that are in support of this, that's the one thing they can get behind. They don't, they just don't want to see us going out there and building new roads and new capacity with it. And I think adding a sentence to that, that particular paragraph would do that. If we get the support of the board to do so, maybe come back with a second reading next week, and then we can set the third reading and public hearing for the 27th. So if that's, I'll throw that out there, and we'll see whether, I've got support from the board to direct staff to do that at this time, and we'll, we'll see. Commissioner Storff was in the queue after me, so I'll pass the baton to him and then Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you, Chair Bozovich. I guess my question would be, I'm not against what you're proposing, but you know, we've talked about in the past making it mandatory to have an audit report and a review of a citizens committee. I kind of quickly proves it several different times. I don't see that included in the language.
It's actually in the, in the code section, which I read.
The attachment to the ordinance has the code language.
Right, it's red, right? Yeah, and I read it. I just quickly proves it several different times. I just, it's not coming out, popping out for me, but I...
It's not popping up.
Yeah, I saw it just a second ago.
What number is it?
Oh, it's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance, sorry.
It's number, Mr. Chair, it's number three in the ordinance.
Okay, great, all right. So I'm wondering with that being, you know, we're going to have a citizen report and audit, where all, at least the counties' dollars are going to be spent. I assume that it would probably include the cities, if we can get the information from them. So it's not precluding them, but our report to the citizens is going to show whether or not, where we spent our money. It's a commitment that we're spending it on the maintenance and the preservation of the current system. That's it. Yeah, I heard Commissioner Sorenson saying maybe we should consider just addressing road, I assume the roads versus bridges. Well, I, I wrote down here, I think it's important to have flexibility, highly important. Take for instance, you know, just in the time that I've been on the board, we had a critical issue came up when Good Pasture Bridge was, you know, failing, and we had to drastically reduce the rate. At the time, we didn't know how we were going to address it. I mean, it could have been a complete new concrete bridge structure because we didn't know if we could save the current one. Ended up, it could have been a multimillion dollar repair. I mean, tens of millions of dollars to get that done, just to, you know, to replace that structure. Is that going to be considered a capital? Are we going to say that that would have been a capital improvement or not? And as it was, staff did a great job. We found the recommended fix was something that we could save the structure, and we were able to do it with, you know, considerable savings. And then we also qualified, I believe, for some federal bridge preservation fund. So it ended up being a great win-win. But I guess I'm trying to point out that the worst case scenario, I just want to make sure that we have the flexibility to maintain our current system and not necessarily hamstring us. I mean, if, if we have to say, okay, it's critical to repair this bridge, this structure, or, you know, hundreds of people aren't going to be able to get to their home versus, no, we can't do that because we've earmarked the money just to take care of the pavement preservation. And, you know, I think that's going to be, you know, I think we're going to regret that we put that in there. So I'm, you know, hopeful that we'll, we'll trust that our reporting out to our citizens and our audit is really going to be what's going to keep us accountable and help keep our staff accountable. If there's a report there that shows that we spent X number of dollars doing something that, you know, citizens can't see that was maintaining the maintenance of our system, then we're going to be held accountable for it, and we're going to have to answer for it. And I think that's, you know, how the citizens should be able to do that. So I don't know if that helps, you know, in the conversation. I'm not opposed to fine tuning the language, but I'm hoping that that audit function and the report out from the citizens advisory committee will go a long ways in making sure that we're spending the resources where we committed to do it with, to the citizens. And mindful that what we're asking for here is not going to be a complete fix of maintenance. We're still going to be a little bit short. So, I mean, I would find it hard for us to be recommending that we're going to be spending money on, you know, a new bridge or I-5 or something when we don't have the resources to maintain the current structure. So I'm, you know, trying to figure out how do we, how we structure this to be successful. And, and I'm, you know, certainly supportive of wanting to hear more from the citizens. We've heard a lot already, the citizens that came to the meetings that we held with the different cities. You know, I, we're challenged as a board and staff, we're stewards of this infrastructure. We need to make sure that it's maintained and operational in the best condition, you know, a $6 billion asset. And we're also charged with how do we do it in a way that the citizens are acceptable. And so we're at the stage trying to find out what citizens would support. And we're also charged with putting it forward the best option. And there was a lot of ideas out there, from toll booths to gas taxes, to service districts and everything. And I think our challenge is what is the best for Lane County and present it to the citizens and see what they support.
Thank you. And if I can just take a quick moment to respond in that what I was proposing would maintain that flexibility where we could have done the Good Pasture Bridge work. What we're, what I was proposing to restrict was new facilities and new capacity, replacement of an existing facility. I would hope that the language would allow for that. And that's one of the reasons why I want to make sure that public works and legal craft that language. What people don't want us doing is using this money as even matching funds for some new road that the federal government comes up with, you know, a program for some kind of new facility that fits the state's constitutional restrictions but is a brand-new facility. And that's really where the rub is. And I think similar to the jail levy we put out there where we were restrictive in where that money could be spent and for what service. We didn't say, we didn't just assign it to the sheriff's department and let him decide where to spend it. We specifically said in the language of the ballot measure it would be spent for the jail. And then we have an audit that's coming out before the end of January here that will show that we spent that correctly. I agree the citizens oversight and audit committee is an important function, but I think there needs to be some restriction up front, and that's what I was asking for. And I think it still allows us for maximum flexibility in how to maintain and keep the system in working condition. I have Commissioner Sorenson in the queue and then Commissioner Liken.
I wanted to ask Mr. Morgan my question about the other ways of narrowing down the use of the funds. I specifically asked about the road cost versus the bridge cost. Could you give me your opinion of what percentage we're spending on roads, road maintenance versus bridge maintenance?
Commissioner Bozovich and, or Chair Bozovich, Commissioner Sorenson. I don't have those numbers with me. I know that, for instance, Commissioner Bozovich talked about resiliency. And so in the floods of, two weeks ago, we were watching some bridges. One of them called Bridge, Bridge Street Bridge. That was very close to being overtopped. We have a bridge right now, order of magnitude of around $1.5 million to replace, that we received some ODOT funding. So the numbers I have is that if a bridge fails, it's in order of $1 to $2 million to replace. Having this money available for match money is a very good idea. Probably in the order of magnitude, we spend anywhere from $2 to $3 million a year maintaining our bridges. That's the estimation that I have.
And how much will the county's portion of this fee be per year? The county's portion?
$6.5 million.
So a third, a third of the money coming in would be used for bridges?
Well, again, I think as Lydia mentioned, we treat the bridges and the roads as a system.
Okay, and that is a challenge, because I totally agree with the idea that flexibility would be good. That if we had a, you know, catastrophic event and this building were destroyed, we couldn't use these funds to fix this building. And I understand that the public would ask, well, you just enacted a fee on car vehicle registration, but now you can't, you can't rebuild this building because we limited the use of it to roads and the state legislature limited the use to roads and bridges and maintenance of those. So I get the idea that there's frustration with the concept of limiting the purpose of the funds. But on the other hand, your hearing, I think, fairly stated that, that the commissioners are being asked, well, what's this money going to be used for? And when we say, well, we want to be flexible on how we use it, it defeats the very question that the person's asking, because they want to know what we're going to use the money for. I would love to say, we're going to use it for the best things that we need it for, and that could involve repairing buildings that the county needs. But we know that that isn't going to be the answer, because there's already restrictions on it. So I gather that you've come up with the, you know, general view that limiting it to roads and bridges, operations and maintenance is sufficiently narrow to answer the question of what's the money going to be used for? Do you have an opinion on the question that was asked earlier? I think, I don't recall the answer, and that was, will the audit include how the cities have spent the money? The audit is only on the county's funds that the county spends. What the cities do with the money is not being audited.
What we're proposing correct is that, that we are doing an audit of the county's portion. That's what is included in the ordinance. I think as was mentioned, we would be happy to partner with the cities. And if the cities wanted to work with us, we could include their information and their projects. The city of Eugene has had a very good result with using a similar type of assistance.
Can we require that the cities either participate in our audit or do their own audit? Can we require that in the courses of referral?
I'm getting a no from our county.
Lawyers say no, okay.
Lawyers say no.
Thank you, and I want to be mindful, we've got about seven minutes to a time certain. So if we can maybe at least get through the decision on the first reading, and then we'll come, we may have to come back after the time certain to talk about voter pamphlet and other issues. Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll be, I'll be real quick. I, I think I'd be hesitant to support the idea of limiting, and I'm pretty happy with the item number three and a citizen oversight and annual audit. And I have two specific reasons why. I-5 Beltline Interchange required a $15 million match by Lane County at the time. That did increase capacity, it's also made it much more safe. And Pioneer Parkway, that partnership was with Lane County. Lane County contributed $5 million to that project. Today, there's a half a billion dollar operation there located on that $5 million investment. And if it's ultimately built out, that's $2 billion coming back to the property tax payroll and then probably over the next 20 years. So I would, and that, by the way, that did increase capacity on the Pioneer Parkway as well. So I would, I think number three, I'm satisfied with number three by having the oversight. And I think that, I would say that my constituents in my area would probably be hesitant in saying that this should be limited. I think our intention clearly is to use this money for the, for operation and maintenance. But I think there comes a time, and right now, we have a very fuzzy-feeling Oregon Transportation Commission. But I will tell you right now, when I was mayor and when Stuart Foster was chairman of the Oregon Transportation Commission, it was not a fuzzy-feeling commission. It was, he will require the match, otherwise the project will not be built. And he was that direct. And so right now, the OTC is a very good OTC to work with. And they're not, they're not coming out, coming at you that way. That doesn't mean it's not going to change one day and go back. And so I, that's why I think we need to be careful on limiting. And that's why I think item number three, I think establishes and takes care of a lot of this by having that oversight, by having the audit in place. And I think our intentions are pretty clear, but there will come, there potentially comes that time where maybe a match would be required for increased capacity on a major project that would maybe bring in more, more opportunity, more jobs. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, is there a motion on the first reading?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Farr? I have moved to accept first reading and set the second reading and public hearing on ordinance 15-01 in the matter of amending Lane Code Chapter 15 to adopt a vehicle registration fee approved by Lane County voters in May 2015. And do we have a date on that second reading?
January 27th at 1:30.
On January 27th at 1:30.
Second. They're moved and seconded, discussion to the motion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Do you want us to return after your 10:30 to discuss the informational pamphlet?
Yes, please, I think, I don't think two minutes will do justice to talk about voters pamphlets.
Chair, does Mr. Nelson need to return for that also?
I think mostly we probably need maybe Ms. McKinney and maybe legal counsel here for that discussion.
Russell was having to be involved.
Had his option, thank you. So with that, we are going to move to, move back to item 8B, which is a second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 14-07 in the matter of amending Chapter 8 of Lane Code and enacting an ordinance and granting Charter Communications a non-exclusive franchise for operation of a cable communication system. And I think we've got Mr. Chaney and Ms. Bowling.
Chair Bozovich, commissioners. What you have in front of you is a proposed ordinance that would replace the existing ordinance for cable television that's provided within the county outside the cities and county right-of-way.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I have a question, and I asked this question last week so that you could be prepared to answer it. With this franchise agreement with Charter Communications, are they paying the county for any of their, a percentage of their revenue for either telephone service or internet service provision that comes along with cable TV?
As we discussed, there's, there are a number of things that are included in the agreement that are included in their gross revenue that were calculated on. But internet service charges are not included in that. Subsequent to the passage of the Internet Tax Freedom Act in 1998, that act precluded any state or local agency from making any taxes on internet service. It grandfathered to 10 states that had already instituted statewide taxes. But Oregon wasn't one of those 10 states. And further, it allowed taxes on sales tax on purchases made in the internet, but Oregon is a sales tax state either. So there's no provision in this agreement for that because federal law doesn't allow it.
So if, if I were a strictly internet provider trying to set up a system in rural Lane County...
County and wanted to get a franchise agreement and use of county right-of-way for the wires that I want to string in the county right-of-way, how would we execute that? Or would we basically have to give them the right to use county right-of-way for free?
Commissioner Bozovic, Chair Bozovic. Just like the phone company or other utilities under state law, now we wouldn't be able to charge any franchise fee for that whatsoever. I think part of the context of this agreement is that we've had this agreement for a number of years, but that overall cable revenues have peaked. And a lot of the revenue stream for, that's going on, being delivered through the cable system is really internet service that we're not allowed to tax. So, I think that we're going to be looking down the road at probably lower revenues progressively because the part that's delivered directly through the internet communications via IP is going to be free of taxes unless that law is changed.
It seems to me the way, at least television programming's moving, as you see things like House of Cards, it's only provided through the internet and Netflix, is that you'll see less and less of the actual formal cable TV or even satellite TV. And people will be live streaming, or basically most of their programming from Amazon Prime and Netflix and other providers to their internet service provider. And it seems like there's this huge gap, at least that the federal governments put us into where we're not allowed to tax that portion of these cable TV, you know, these huge corporations that are generating revenue by use of our right-of-ways, and we're precluded from taxing that in any way. It's an unfortunate situation, and it's kind of an interesting situation that I understand the reason the law got put in this way was at the request of some of those larger cable corporations on Capitol Hill, went in their influence in Congress. And it just bothers me to see that sort of crony capitalism at work here at the local level where we're prevented from getting revenue for use of the public's facilities for a private corporation to generate profits because there's been some law approved in DC back in 1998 that prevents us from doing that with those large corporations. So, I'm not real happy about that. But I do understand that that actual law expired on December 31st possibly, and there's possible changes coming up. And is there a clause in this contract that allows us to revisit it if there is a change in federal law?
Well, the current status of the Internet Tax Freedom Act, sorry, Chair Bozovic, is that it was set to expire, and actually, it did expire on December 11th of 2014. But as part of the much-written-about budget extension that the Congress passed right before the end of the year, it was then extended again through, I think it's September 30th of 2015. I will mention, however, that Congress, that the House of Representatives on a voice vote approved making this tax exemption permanent last July. And now, it went to the Senate where it died. But there doesn't appear to be a large constituency of people clamoring for this to be taxed. So, in that context, it's hard to predict that there will be, there is one proposed change to the law, which is the Tax Fairness Act. But that deals with states that are sales tax states, being able to require other states to collect sales taxes for them. Then it wouldn't benefit us.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Actually, just another comment. I always appreciate Mr. Chaney giving information to us because he's always so thoroughly researched. And it's amazing how you can ask sometimes what seem to me obscure questions, and he just answers off the right answer. Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, there's a public hearing, and Andy was coming over to go, "Where are you going, Jay?" Thank you. Once again, I'm being helped. So, I'd like to open the public hearing on ordinance number 14-07. Do we have anybody signed up to speak? Can somebody check the list back there? Thank you, Mr. Clark.
So, we have no one signed up. Is there anyone present that wants to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to a motion if somebody has one to be made. Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Moved approval of ordinance 14-07 in the matter of amending Chapter 8 of Lane Code and enacting an ordinance granting Charter Communications a non-exclusive franchise for operation of a cable communication system.
Second. They're moved and seconded. Is there any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, I really appreciate the questions you asked earlier. And as a father of a 22 and 20-year-old, I can assure you, it is changing before our eyes. And I'm amazed right now, some of these, I'm guessing that the larger cable corporations are going to be absorbing this, they're going to be investing in this new technology. Some of the smaller ones, I expect, will just be going away. And so, I really, I thought your questions were extremely pertinent because I'm seeing it right before my very eyes in my home and how our youth that are tech savvy, they've been that way since they could crawl, are beginning to view, whether it's mainstream or, they view it as mainstream. I view it as, "Wow, what is that?" And so, I thought your questions were extremely pertinent, and I do appreciate that.
Commissioner Farr. Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Mr. Chair, you know, I'd like to point out something that you stated earlier. If we do have the subduction zone quake, I hate to think what's going to happen to all communication. And if we become too reliant on any one form of communication, I think that they may come where we would just long for broadcast communication once again. So, I just wanted to, just a clarification on the non-exclusive franchise. Does that mean that it's not Charter Cable's exclusive realm in the county, that other cable companies are able to operate in the county? Just a reiteration of that.
Commissioner Farr, Chair Bozovic. Yes, in theory. Now, of course, there's a large installed base of existing cable system that's out in the county. But yes, anyone else could come to us. And I think I may have mentioned in the memo that someone else could come to us. And in terms of something I hadn't mentioned was the actual franchise fee that we charge is 5%. And that rate is also set by and capped by federal law. So, anyone else who came in, yes, they could do that. They could offer us the 5% fee, and as long as they met the requirements of the Cable Act, we could grant them a franchise as well. However, it appears that most of the densely settled areas of Lane County outside the cities are already pretty well-covered. So, there's, that might be a little problematic practically.
No. Could other companies come in and demand and attain use of the infrastructure in place that's been laid by Charter or whichever other cable company has laid infrastructure?
Commissioner Farr, no, they own their own wires. I will say that the franchise does allow them to, for instance, hang their wires on existing telephone poles in areas that are not underground-served. So, another utility would be able to use the same telephone poles and that sort of thing that are out there in the infrastructure, but not their wires or cables. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Stewart.
My question, Mr. Chaney, would be, is there any value in having a legislative committee maybe look into this a little bit deeper and just make sure that it wouldn't be something legislatively that we would want to look into as a change? Certainly don't want to waste the legislative committee's time because it's valuable with so many other items. But, you know, I witnessed down in Cottage Grove, Charter has, had strictly been within inside-the-city limits of Cottage Grove. And they have now branched out into the rural areas based on the idea that they're doing this triple play where you can get your phone, your TV and your internet service. And that's, I guess, made it affordable for them to come out there. And I'm not trying to, you know, I guess deter that development because I'm sure it's a good service to the citizens if they want to provide it. But it seems to me like, you know, should there be some reflection and potentially a law change to help us be able to, I guess, be compensated for our right-of-ways and things being used?
Commissioner Stewart, let's see. I guess there's two parts to that answer. First is, since this is a federal law and a federal, and the law is pretty well-established, the federal government can occupy this field and regulate it, there probably isn't much the state legislature can probably do about this.
Our legislative committee does do federal priorities and do things. You know, we'll be going back on United Front Trip here in February, and so it could be an item that Board asks the United Front Trip to speak with their delegation about.
Could be. Commissioner Stewart, I'm not really competent to evaluate that. I will mention a related item, though, which is, under state law, most utilities, telephone companies, water and so on, are allowed to run in county right-of-way also free of charge, completely free of any charge. Within cities, they are subject to franchise fees. However, the legislature, going back into the 1950s, I think originally to promote rural electrification and telephone service, granted them the right to run in public right-of-way outside of cities free of charge. And I believe that the AOC is looking into seeing if there's any room to broaden that or to limit that exclusion because that's a much larger issue. I think our county engineer, Bill Morgan, could speak to that with the amount of infrastructure that's out there in county right-of-way that winds up affecting our right-of-way, but we have to allow there for no fee at all.
Yeah. And I would, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, just a comment. In the 10 years, I think we've had this conversation at AOC multiple times. It seems like the commissioners kind of back away from pressing that or trying to proceed with any type of legislation that changes that. And I think it's their relationships with power companies and services to the citizens. And ultimately, it ends up being a charge passed on to the citizens. So, I know it gets pretty complicated, but I also know that on the flip side, that our staff that's out there taking care of the roadsides and everything, they have to maneuver around structures that are placed there by companies and that, you know, adds cost. And it's something that we have to deal with that we don't get compensated for.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion in the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance? Oh, this is an ordinance, it has to be roll call, sorry. I just, as I said that, I realized that. So, Mr. Mokhaisky, what do you call the roll? Commissioner Sorenson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Lichen?
Aye.
Commissioner Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Bozovic?
Aye.
Thank you. With that, we'll jump back to our, and bring Ms. McKenney back up and continue our discussion of the vehicle registration fee. Wanted to complete a discussion of voter's pamphlet versus an informational pamphlet and the differences, what they allow, and maybe give some direction to staff because the lead time necessary to staff up if we do decide on a voter's pamphlet versus an informational pamphlet. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mokhaisky maybe to describe those two instruments, what the cost differences are and what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bozovic, if I may, the reason I suggested Mr. Nelson didn't need to be here was so he could go back to his office and work. But I see he's here, so it was, thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Morgan. Thank you.
We had also asked, and George Russell was here, and George, you know, is our management services director and oversees our elections function. Cheryl Betchard is not able to be here today. And so, George has provided information to us, and Lydia can give a good overview for you. And we want to present to the Board, we've received direction already from the Board that you would like to make information available to the voters. So, that is, we feel that we have direction on that. What we want to present to you is the differences between a voter's pamphlet and an informational pamphlet, the cost differences, the content differences, and what the result will be between those two. And then seek your direction. We're sort of, as I indicated earlier, coming to the point that we need, particularly, we're going to do the voter's pamphlet, there's a significant amount of work, staff time and work that needs to happen that we will need to begin to do. So, with that, I'll have, and George just showed up, so I'll invite George up here as well for any questions. And I think between George and Lydia, they can give you a good rundown of the differences between the two options.
Thanks very much, Chair Bozovic. Commissioners, hello again. So, I will give a brief overview, and if there's really hard questions, I will turn them over to Mr. Russell here. So, we've been discussing, and it's been clear from the Board, that if we do move forward with this, that the Board is interested in having a mechanism of voter's pamphlets to what's being discussed, to provide information to voters and to provide the opportunity for people to provide arguments for and against the proposed vehicle registration fee. Well, when we began discussions with the county clerk, she pointed out to us some things that were different between a voter's pamphlet, the formal voter's pamphlet, and then what we're calling an informational pamphlet for voters. One of the big differences is, as I mentioned in our previous discussion, that if it is a voter's pamphlet, we will be required to open it up to the 200 candidates and the 66 special districts for the May 15 election. The current cost estimate we have for doing an informational pamphlet is between $24,000 and $38,000. I don't have an exact number of what the cost increase would be, but we've been told it would be estimated to $20,000 to $40,000. And the reason for that is because the length of the pamphlet will increase by up to 200 candidates and 66 special districts. And county staff is required to review all of that information, publish that information and send that information out. The current staff resources, from my understanding, will cover what their current responsibilities are for the May 15 election. Then again, if we do do a voter's pamphlet, my understanding is that we would need to hire a temporary staff or some additional staff to be able to conduct that work within the timeframe necessary. So, again, when we started to have these conversations, we were intrigued with this idea of being able to provide the same information that we believe the Board is asking us to provide to the public in a mechanism that is a county mechanism. It will be provided, produced by Lane County. We will open it up for the arguments for and against, and then it will be mailed to Lane County voters in the timeframe that a voter's pamphlet would be. We believe that that would accomplish the Board's goal of providing that information, and it would do it in a way that is fiscally responsible, and we can do that within our current financial means. And I think that's one of the main reasons we're moving forward with that recommendation. I don't know if George has anything to add, but that's really the brunt of the discussion there in terms of the differences of those two items.
Commissioner Sorenson.
How much would the candidates have to pay to have their statements listed if all of these candidates for these elective offices were to all want to have a statement in?
The filing fee would be $25,000 or $100, depending on if the office holder receives a salary or compensation. And then the special district fee would be between $100,000 and $400,000, depending on the district voter registration.
Are we limited by state statute as to how much we can charge candidates? Or can we make an estimate of what it's going to cost and then have the candidates pay a proportionate amount?
Chair Bozovic, Commissioners, George Russell, and I'm Director of Management Services. I did have some conversation, actually, with the Secretary of State's Office yesterday and the Elections Division. And the voter's pamphlet is controlled by state law. And while there is some flexibility with respect to that, it does appear that there are some maximums and minimums that are set by the Secretary of State's Office.
That's true of both the state voter's pamphlet as well as a county voter's pamphlet?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. And so, is this, what is the cost of doing the voter's pamphlet, the voter's pamphlet, assuming that we do collect the maximum amounts that we're allowed to collect?
The estimate is in the $30,000 range to do that. I think she gave a figure of 24 to...
Thirty-eight.
And the cost of doing an informational is about $25,000 or $24,000?
Thank you, pardon. The cost for doing the informational pamphlet, my understanding, is $24,000 to $38,000. And then it would be an additional cost... then it would be an additional cost to do the formal voter's pamphlet. Is that maybe...
Well, I think there's a difference, that sounds a little high to me for an information package, but it depends on what you want to do with that information package. The concern that I would have is, what is the objective? And if the objective really is to get out as much information, factual information, about the measure, then the most relevant way to do that is through an information package. If you do a voter's pamphlet, you are required to open it up, and you will have to share the document with all others who want to have either their measures or their campaign message included in that voter's pamphlet. So, I think part of the question is, what is the objective? If the objective is to make sure that folks have accurate, inclusive information about the vehicle registration fee, perhaps the most effective way to do that is the information pamphlet.
Okay. Just to zero in on the voter's pamphlet for a moment, when people want to submit statements in favor of a measure, how much money do they have to pay for submitting that in a county voter's pamphlet?
Do you have that figure there? I think it's $25, isn't it?
Well, I have a candidate filing fee of $25. I don't think we have the information on before and against argument.
I'd have to check on that, but my recollection is, a few years ago, it was $10.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Well, it says, "Electors can pay a fee or turn in signatures for a voter's pamphlet argument. A filing fee of $300 for a county argument is identified in Lane Code 2.630." So, it appears that that would be the same cost that we would charge for arguments for or against, $300.
Okay. So, if, say, 10 people opposed it and 10 people favored it, we would bring in that revenue, but it would also increase our costs if we did a voter's pamphlet? How would we handle that if we were distributing information to voters and it wasn't via the mechanism of a voter's pamphlet? How would we charge people for submitting information to us that they want the voters to receive? How would we do that?
We'd certainly have more flexibility, because as Mr. Russell stated, we wouldn't be regulated by the state. I think what staff has discussed is, we would want to follow the same type of format with regards to costs, deadlines, you know, to use that same system that the state has set up.
Would we be allowed to use public funds to send to the voters an argument that says, "Please vote for this measure. It's in the public interest. It's good because of 1, 2, 3." Can we expend public funds for that purpose? And can we expend public funds for the opposite purpose? "Please don't vote for this. We are the committee against more taxes, and we don't want you to vote for it." So, I've been very concerned about the idea that the county would be expending money other than through a voter's pamphlet to provide information, particularly information against the measure, because we would have no way to know what our liability would be about those statements. That's one of the things we get with a voter's pamphlet.
So, I know county council is here, and I am going to let Andy Clark take the brunt of this question. I think I'll go ahead, and I'll let you know your response.
Yeah, folks are looking my ways, I figured I better come up. We haven't looked at that, I haven't looked at that question, that exact question, Commissioner Sorenson. And I haven't talked with Cheryl Betchard about it either. We can do that. I suspect what I'm going to find out is, the informational packet essentially stands on the same footing as the voter's pamphlet would, which is, and it contains, as you know, arguments for and against measures and for and against particular candidates. So, I assume it falls under the same category, and that it wouldn't be okay to spend money putting that together in the same way that the county spends money putting a voter's pamphlet together.
As I understand, from a legal perspective, if we spend money to say, "Please vote for this measure," and we have spent money that a proponent of the measure wants to have that message sent, and we send it, we've expended public money in support or opposition to a matter that is subject to voter approval, as opposed to what we typically do when we don't have a voter's pamphlet, is we typically provide information to the Secretary of State. This is what I might call vetted and sanitized and carefully reviewed. It does not advocate the pro or con on the measure. And I can see Mr. Russell nodding, because school districts have to do this all the time, because they usually don't put out a voter's pamphlet. They usually put out information for the voter, and that information is... I'm talking about one of the things you get with a voter's pamphlet, which is direct advocacy. The proponents of this measure, maybe, I'm guessing here, but maybe the Eugene Area Chamber Commerce, "This is a good thing. We want you to vote for it." Or another group, you know, "We don't want you to vote for it." That's one of the things, that's why you pay your money, to put your statement in a voter's pamphlet. So, I want to distinguish between, Mr. Russell said, "Well, we have this objective of providing information to the voters, and that is a worthy objective, and that's a good one, and we do that, and we will do that." But we also are talking about whether we're going to have a voter's pamphlet, and when Commissioner Farr and I went to the Eugene City Council, that was an issue that was brought up, was whether we were going to have voter's pamphlet or not.
Yeah. And again, I haven't looked at the question to see if there's any distinction between the sort of informational packet we're talking about versus a voter's pamphlet. Obviously, if we do a voter's pamphlet, we spend money on getting that out, and part of what's in there are non-sanitized.
Yeah. Would you envision, for example, a process, if we didn't have a voter's pamphlet, would you envision a process where opponents would be allowed to give money to the county and give their statement to the county, and then have that distributed using public funds, distributed to the voters, saying, "Don't vote for this," and then say whatever scurrilous things that those opponents might want to say?
I think that's what's anticipated, yeah.
You're anticipating we would use county funds to advocate the defeat of a measure?
So, if I could note, it's not, the county would provide information. We're not going to advocate, we can't advocate for or against the argument. If we use the public, the funds, the funds would pay essentially what it's meant to pay for, though it doesn't cover the production costs. We would have an argument for, arguments against, that would be provided by, as you suggested, perhaps the Eugene Chamber. It wouldn't be a county statement.
Right. Yeah, and I wouldn't anticipate otherwise. Yeah, that's what I tried to clarify, is that I don't know what staff anticipates putting in the information packet. We haven't talked about it, but to the extent that it's going to include pros and cons by people outside of the county, there would be county money spent on the packet, because it costs money to produce it and to mail it out and whatever. I'm not suggesting the county is going to fund money on particular arguments for it or against it, just that there are attendant costs, just as there are attendant costs of putting it up together, a voter's pamphlet.
I would like to, however, add that even with the information packet, if it's a county-paid-for instrument, we would have the arguments and the information reviewed by the Secretary of State's office to make sure that it's factual, neutral information, that it's not advocating on behalf of the county.
Okay. Here's what I would leave you with, just for further discussion. The advantage of a voter's pamphlet is that advocates and opponents are treated fairly. There's a process by which they submit their information, and they are responsible for the content of their arguments. The course that your suggestion, I think, is to provide information that the Secretary of State deems to be accurate and not in the form of advocacy, and does not allow for the county to expend money to allow people to use county resources to advocate in favor or oppose to a particular measure. And the liability for this is quite high for elected officials who expend funds for the advocacy or opposition to a particular measure that the public's voting on. So, that's the reason why governments are very careful in this whole area, not to allow advocacy other than through a voter's pamphlet.
And you're looking at me, but I don't know exactly what the staff plan would be to put in an information packet. Obviously, these folks can speak to that. I was just addressing the legal question of, would an informational packet stand on a different footing than a voter's pamphlet? Does the voter's pamphlet carry some protection to allow pro and con argument by other people versus an information packet? I can't, I don't know for sure on that question. Haven't researched it.
If I may, Commissioner, I think the difference is that an information packet would be focused solely on the county's measure, whereas a voter's pamphlet may have the county's measure included, but it may also have 150 candidates who are running for school board, for special district, may also have other money measures that are included in that voter's pamphlet. And I think one of the ideas about a voter's information pamphlet is that it does target a specific issue.
And, Mr. Sheriff, I just tried to make this as crystal clear as possible, that that, from our standpoint, is the only difference between the informational packet and the voter pamphlet, is that it would not include all of the other candidates and ballot measures. But we intend to conduct the exact same process that we would with the voter pamphlet. In other words, we would allow for arguments for and against to be submitted. We would vet all of that, we would put factual information in there, and then we would have it reviewed by the Secretary of State's office to make sure that it is factual, neutral, objective, and balanced. And so, really, the only difference, in our view, from an informational packet to voter pamphlet, is it is solely this issue rather than this issue plus 200-plus other issues and candidates, and the cost and time involved in that.
Thank you. I've got Commissioner Farr and then Commissioner Liken in the queue. So, Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. And, Mr. Russell, thank you very much for the explanation of the information packet. And I know school boards do use them frequently. I've spent years on school boards, and we've passed a number of bonds that allowed us to build schools and allowed us to add technology to schools. But, you know, the thing that I think about, is when I get this big pile of stuff in the mail, and information packet after information packet, some come from insurance companies, some come from other sales agencies, some come from J.Jill, some come from wherever it may be, and some come from government agencies, some may be the stormwater news, or some may be the Public Works update, I determine which of these I'm going to spend my resource of time and read. And most of the information items get kind of put on this pile, and I'll read it if I get to it. Voter's pamphlet, however, when it comes, it says voter's pamphlet, and I personally, unlike Commissioner Liken, I pick it up, and I put that one aside, and I will read it. And, you know, I said that, I didn't mean to be glib, because a lot of people are like Commissioner Liken, you know, gather information online. I like the voter's pamphlet, and it stands out. It's very different to the other information packets that come in the mail. It says voter's pamphlet right on it. I'm a voter, and I read that. And, you know, so, to me, my bias is toward a voter's pamphlet, the added expense notwithstanding. And I guess I need to be clarification as to, when I run for office, I pay to put my name in a voter's pamphlet. Who gets the money when I pay?
The Secretary of State.
The Secretary of State. So, if we put out a voter's pamphlet and people pay to get their name in our voter's pamphlet, the Secretary of State gets that money, invariably. So, we can't use it as a revenue generating venture. Okay, then I'm perfectly clear on that. But once again, I'll fall back on the fact that when I get the voter's pamphlet in the mail, I do take time to read it. It does cost to put other arguments in the voter's pamphlet, and that is a deterrent to 200 and some odd names and measures getting their listings in the voter's pamphlet, beyond just the fact that they're on the ballot, which is not on the ballot. So, you know, I agree with Commissioner Sorenson, I think it's the fair way to get the information out, and I think it's the way that people understand and expect more than an information packet. Unless I can hear, unless I hear arguments strung to the contrary, I am certainly in favor of the voter's pamphlet, and I'd like to give staff the direction to move forward with the voter's pamphlet. Now, we're on a first reading today. We'll be going forward to a second reading. And I had a question for you earlier in the day, as to, is today the deadline for making the determination as to whether it's a voter's pamphlet or an information packet? And the deadline seems to be based upon the work plan of staff. Could you expand on that a little bit, Mr. Mokhaisky, and Ms. McKenney?
Certainly. There is no formal deadline, but as you've mentioned, the deadline really is the workload for the county clerk's office would be significantly increased. If it is a voter's pamphlet, the board directs us to do so. We're just asking as a courtesy for you to let us know as soon as possible. We would prefer to have a direction for staff today, so again, if we are going to go down that path, we can start working on gathering those additional resources so that we do what the board directs us to. So, it is our preference. There's no formal deadline unless, doesn't look like there's a...
And that was what I understood, and that's what Mr. Mokhaisky reiterated earlier. So, what would happen is, if we gave you a head nod, sort of go ahead with the voter's pamphlet, it would kind of just be more or less putting things in place. And at some point in the future, we could say, "Well, I hope you didn't put too much work in that, but we've changed our mind, and we're going to go with the information packet." Is that correct assumption on my part?
We will always follow your direction. So, yes.
When legally applied.
You deserve the right to change course on that issue, absolutely. I think, as Lydia indicated and George has said, you know, we're just trying to get and put in place the motions that need to happen in order to respond to what the direction of the board is. So, we will follow either direction, and if you wish to change course, the further along that we go, the more difficult, or the more investment will have already been made in the process that you direct us with. But I think if you did move forward with a second reading, or with a public hearing, which will happen on the 27th, certainly if you don't adopt the ordinance on the 27th, we will not pursue. So, we'll do everything we can to sort of limit the amount of ramping up that needs to happen between now and the 27th, because you may or may not approve the ordinance ultimately. I think at that date is where we, if and when you approve the ordinance on the 27th, then we will be ready to move forward rather quickly with the voter's pamphlet, with other factual information, you know, fact sheet, we've talked about it, frequently asked questions list, but we don't want to prepare a lot of that information until the board has taken formal action before.
You partially answered what is my next question already. That is, the parallel process that an information packet and a voter's pamphlet would have, that certain word that goes into the voter's pamphlet would not be wasted if we changed our mind and went with the information packet, and vice versa. However, the voter's pamphlet, I think it is more complex and requires more staff time in terms of how the elections handle it. There's more work down the road that would go into the voter's pamphlet, but is it safe to assume, I don't want to assume, would we not really expend too much extra on the voter's pamphlet or the information packet between now and the 23rd?
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, excuse me.
I, George, I don't know if you have any comments, but I don't anticipate a significant expenditure of resources. I think it's more planning work that we're trying to put in place to understand what the board's desire is, so that we can be prepared to act on that if and when the time comes.
No, I agree. I mean, it will require some additional resources, and Lydia talked about what some of those are. The other thing I would mention is that there are entities, of course, who have done both. And I do think preparing for a voter's pamphlet will give us a lead-up on, I'm sorry, on a voter's pamphlet, will lead us in the direction that we're prepared to do an information pamphlet if we decide to do that, or to do both.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mokhaisky. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
So, I've got Commissioner Liken, then Commissioner Stewart, and then myself in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Couple of questions, and, George, there's maybe more for you, and that is, so looking at the election in May of 2015, I am guessing, and maybe getting ahead of myself here, so if we decide to refer this to the voters, this is likely to be the only measure that is county-wide. The others are specific to a district, is that correct?
No, at this point, I can't think of any other one that would be county-wide.
And the trends, and if you look at... And the trends, and if you look at the election trends, it would show that it's probably going to be maybe a 30% turnout, if even that much. And so would the voter's pamphlet then go to every household, every elected, or every person who's, who's registered to vote? How does that work?
My recollection is, and don't hold me to this, is that those are sent to every registered household.
So that, that information be sent to, so you'd have a large voter's pamphlet with, so each household in, in one district would have, say, school board members, but every, every district, every precinct, every place in Lane County would have the vehicle registration fee, regardless if they're going to vote or not. And I know, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, and you suggest people are not going to vote or anything else. I, I like the idea of the information piece, and I, and I have, and my reasoning really comes down to, this really covers all the entire all of Lane County. And I think the more that we can curb expenses, but yet get the same information out. And by the way, I think, Steve, you, you had mentioned, and George you as well, mentioned one of the most critical pieces, and that is, no matter what we do, it has to be certified by the Secretary of State's office, period. And information, whether it's information or the voter's pamphlet, period. We cannot send something out unless the Secretary of State's office says, yes, this is legal and binding, therefore you can, you can send out, correct? Let's go ahead. So I, I think, I don't expect that there's going to be a huge political action committee out there going rah rah rah, let's vote for the vehicle registration fee. I do not expect that. I don't necessarily expect there's going to be a group that's going to be organizing to oppose this. I really would think that this is going to come down to information, which I'm going to suggest that the information may talk about how much money was, the Lane County received from, from timber payments in the past, that we received money from federal, state, gas tax, vehicle registration fee, that information would all go into so people can, in a sense, can make up their mind on how they're going to vote. I think that's where I, I feel like this information piece, because of the fact this isn't going to be, like, for instance, on the jail levy. Okay, that went out in Lane County wide, but let's not forget, that was a very well-organized political action committee in place as well. The sheriff was traveling all throughout, talking about this. And actually, in a sense, that probably made more sense that if we could put something like that in a voter's pamphlet, where this one is really about information. And let's face it, there's already people who've already made up their minds right now without the proper information that are going to vote no. And I think it's just a matter of those folks who are teetering, what does, what are, what the, what are the expectations for, for us to pay this fee, again, if we decide to refer this? I want to, you know, that's a caveat at all times until we get to that point. But it really comes down to, what is this going to do for us in the long run to benefit our lives? And I saw, it really just comes down to the information. I don't, I don't think you need to have an advocacy, or folks who advocate or oppose. I think this is just, this is an election where it's, it's an information election, and people want to see, what are we going to get out of this? And so, and what does this mean? Why are we in this position? And I think that that's where the information can clarify, this is what, where Lane County was during, from 2000 to 2006, you can use those dates, because that is actual factual information. We received 20 blah blah million dollars a year in, in dollars that went strictly to the road funds, but why are we in this position today, type of thing? So you're not advocating, you're just presenting information only. And that's where I, I believe that the voter's pamphlet, I think it would become excessive for a, a, a referral to the voters on, on a, this specific item compared to, because as a candidate, I've always put my, in the voter's pamphlet, just because I don't read it, because I always put it in there. And I already, first of all, I already know what I said, so I don't need to read it. And, but it's also online. You can go to the Secretary of State's office, and if you want to read about a candidate, it's all online. And that's, that's my preference, but just because that's my preference, that doesn't mean anything. But I'm just talking about this specific, you know, what I think is the best thing for a buck, and that's why I believe that the information piece does make a lot of sense. If we knew that there was going to be a big political action committee on both sides, and yeah, rah rah rah, we want to support this, and no, we don't, I may have a different view. But because of, this is an information election, that's where I think this, the, the information piece would be more beneficial in the long run for Lane County, just providing information, factual information for the citizens, and making sure that Secretary of State's office signs off on it, because ultimately, that's, that's going to be what it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to try to get straight in my mind, whether we produce a informational packet or we produce a voter's pamphlet. Lane County is producing it. Lane County's paying for it, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we could be expending, whether we produce the voter's pamphlet and send it out, and it includes pluses and minuses for and against, we'll be spending county dollars to produce the voter's pamphlet, is that correct?
Yes, we will. And I would just note on the cost, I have to apologize, but we don't really have very good numbers. We've been going back and forth in terms of informational pamphlet versus voter's pamphlet. But regardless of the cost, and we can provide you some details on that electronically when we get that detail from Cheryl, it would be at the county's expense.
Okay. And what we do have, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have some pretty clear statutes and laws on how the voter's pamphlet is created, is that correct? What about the informational packet? Is there pretty clear laws that govern what is sent out in the informational packet?
My understanding is that there aren't, that we don't have the same restrictions. Again, what we've discussed is, I think, as George said, we would have to get the language approved by the Secretary of State's office. But with regards to, we have more flexibility if it's an informational pamphlet. We would want to follow the same procedures and the same timelines, and we think that would be a wise way to move forward if you direct us to do the informational pamphlets.
So I guess that being said, and I appreciate, and I don't want to discredit Mr. Russell's conversation with the Secretary of State, but it appears that if we were going under the law that governs the voter's pamphlet, the Secretary of State and the law is going to, pretty much, they're going to review that and say, yep, that's appropriately created. If we ask them for, is it a courtesy review of our informational packet, because they're not bound by law to do it? And my experience with the State is, is that if you ask them for a review of a decision through the AG's office, or even through the Secretary of State, they'll give you the best answer that they have, but it doesn't defend you, they don't defend you, and it doesn't defend you if somebody takes you to court. So am I, I'm trying, I'm trying to think that it might be worth, even though I think that this is just a, it's going to be a pretty, as Commissioner Lykan said, probably not a big heated for and against, a lot of big challenges, and I don't see, foresee any type of a big challenge, but it seems to me like it's kind of an insurance policy on liability if we go the voter's pamphlet route versus, versus the informational. Am I, would that be the only real difference, or is that even a difference? Am I cooking something up in my mind?
No, I, I agree with you. They won't guarantee that it's, that they would defend it and/or that it won't be challenged. But what they will do is give you their best opinion as to whether or not they think it meets the requirements in terms of not being advocating for or being neutral in terms of its content.
And maybe just a step forward, maybe is that the same applied to the voter's pamphlet production, too, is we don't get any extra protection on our voter's pamphlet?
I think that's accurate, yes. Part of the difference, though, is you are somewhat limited in terms of the space and the number of words and what you can put in the voter's pamphlet.
So we could have some flexibility, say, the arguments could be, instead of 500 words, they could be 1,000, or we could have some flexibility there if we did the informational piece where we don't have the flexibility potentially with the voter's pamphlet, it's pretty scripted, is that correct? Well, I have, I don't really have a clear vision myself. I'm kind of leaning towards the fact that a voter's pamphlet is pretty scripted under law as to what can and can't take place. It seems to me like that might be a better process to go through. I'm not 100% concerned that every school district position and everybody running for a school board is going to want to put their name into the voter's pamphlet. I mean, I guess it might be a two or a one-up to run for school board this particular year if we do a voter's pamphlet, because you will have the ability to get your name out in a, what I think is a pretty economical way to do it. The voter's pamphlet's a really good, a good buy to get your name and your information out. But I'm not too convinced that there's going to be a lot of demand to be in it, I guess, and so I'm not sure that that's going to, if that's the deciding factor that increases the cost of, of the production, I'm not, I'm not sure that we'll see a huge increase because of, everybody wants to be in it. So I talk a lot, probably didn't give us much traction, but the same, kind of leaning towards the voter's pamphlet just for the additional protection that we might receive if there is any.
Thank you. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the real issue here is giving the public an opportunity to hear both sides of an issue in the, in the best manner possible, and in a manner that also is, is set out in accordance to the laws, so we're not advocating for or against an issue with public funds. And that manner has been set forward in state election laws as a voter's pamphlet, and is clearly defined and understood that, I haven't seen a county yet get sued for issuing a voter's pamphlet. I have seen lots of lawsuits for school districts, special districts, counties, you name it, for informational packets, and whether or not they met, they were advocacy or not. But I've never seen a county sued for issuing a voter's pamphlet. You know, that, that's pretty clear to me. The secondary thing is, I'm sad that we don't have a county's voter pamphlet for every election. We used to, once upon a time ago, that was cut for budget reasons. And that was, that was the major reason we don't have one every year. And when I first moved here, you got one at every election. And, you know, yes, a lot of people are reading it online now, but the way the Secretary of State's information gets into the online is it's submitted to go into the voter pamphlet. If there's no voter pamphlet, there wouldn't be an online voter's pamphlet either, because it's that $300 with your argument. You know, I, I was one of the few people that submitted an argument on the jail levy, so I paid my $300 and submitted my argument, a certain number of words and all that stuff, for the voter's pamphlet. Yes, it does cost more. And, but the question is, and I don't want to have one of the arguments against the vote in the vehicle registration fee, is we didn't allow the public a full opportunity to discuss this, and to put their arguments out there for the voters. Or even after the election, should we put it on the ballot on the 27th? You know, said that, you know, the county didn't issue a voter's pamphlet because they didn't want to have the public discuss this openly, and so the vote was a sham in some way. Those are things I never want to hear out in public. So for me, I think it's, it's absolutely important. I voted, I advocated last time and actually contributed some of my office funds to the voter's pamphlet when we did the jail levy for that same reason. And I think, you know, we, we really ought to think about, you know, there's a very clear legal process to issue a voter's pamphlet. Yes, there's 200 other school board races, possible other district levies and all that going on. Great, if somebody wants to pay their $100 or $300 to put arguments in that pamphlet for or against those issues, I think that's a benefit. Yes, it does end up costing us more, but we're allowing our voters to be educated and vote in an educated manner by having a voter's pamphlet. It's a sad thing that we don't. So I am, I am much more in support of a full voter's pamphlet than an informational pamphlet for several of those reasons. And I really think we're, we're getting on the ice legally by doing a, an informational, one-issue, county-only informational pamphlet for a lot of the reasons that Commissioner Sorenson explored. And frankly, one of the things that probably I've seen sitting elected officials, you know, end up paying money in lawsuits for the most is advocacy using public funds. You know, and that's, that's really walking a very fine line about doing this, our own voter pamphlet method, you know, however we do it, somebody's going to say, well, you know, I didn't understand the process, it's not clear, it wasn't publicized well, I missed my, getting my argument in by the deadline, so therefore, you know, it was actually, you know, it was slanted towards this side or that side. You know, and, but if we follow the state, county voter's pamphlet laws, it's already spelt out there today. Anybody can go and read and see the deadlines for submitting an argument, the fees, everything there is about it. There's no question about what that process is, so I'm going to strongly recommend that we go with the county's voter pamphlet. And, and yes, it'll be an additional cost, but we're talking about a fee that will generate for the county and the cities over $11 million annually. $60,000 for voter's pamphlet for an $11 million annual fee, I think is a reasonable cost to educate our voters and to make sure that there is no after-the-vote argument that we were restricting information about the vote. So that's my recommendation. And I looked at everyone else. I think I heard Commissioner Farr say that he's more in favor of a voter's pamphlet. I heard Commissioner Lykan say that he's more in favor of an informational packet. Voter's pamphlet for me. Voter's pamphlet for, Commissioner Sorenson, you leaning towards the voter's pamphlet?
I'm leaning for the voter's pamphlet.
So it sounds like we're about four.
I'll support it.
Yeah. So I think you have direction now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for a really thoughtful discussion, and now we have clear direction.
Okay, so moving on, and thank you for coming back after the time's certain and making yourselves available. Moving on to county administration announcements, Mr. Mokraheyski.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, just one quick one, and if you have questions for me, as I've updated you before, we've gone through a rather extensive process for the recruitment and selection of a internal performance auditor. This is a position that the Board recently reestablished, and you have been in the work, a position that's been in the works to be reestablished for quite some time now. We have gone through that process. We anticipate that next Tuesday, January, help me out, where are we at, January 13th? Is that right? Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure I hit the right date. January 13th, we anticipate a recommendation from the selection committee the Board had delegated, the process for making, for reviewing applicants, doing interviews, and making recommendations to the Board to a selection committee. We have done that process. That's, the selection committee will meet one more time this Thursday, and we anticipate again a recommendation next Tuesday for you on a candidate there. So just wanted to update you on that, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
No questions? Then we'll move on to item 10B, which is a work session, review of community economic development work plan for 2015. And we have Glenda Poling from our Community and Economic Development Department.
Hello. How are you?
Thank you.
If it's not yet, it will be soon.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that does get available to the public.
Excuse me. Chair Bosovich, Commissioners, thank you very much. Really happy to be able to sit here today and share with you our work plan coming up for 2015. As you know, we've done a lot of great economic development work in the past year, and we expect that to move forward as we go along into 2015. What we have before you is a one-pager that is closely aligned to the one-pager that you have for your strategic plan for all of Lane County. This is specifically for community and economic development. And as you'll see in the VIN chart, what we have in our work plan is really very closely aligned with what the strategic plan is all about. And I'm going to invite Steve Mokraheyski to jump in and, and discuss this with us as we go along. I'm not sure how you would like me to proceed. You've got the plan in front of you. I'm happy to let you know the key objectives are not going to change. So your strategic plan, the infrastructure, self, the safe and healthy county, and vibrant communities remains our key objective. What will change-- What will change as we move along are the tactics and how we approach those, you know, because obviously, as we move along, these tactics will either become successful, ongoing ventures, will reach achievements, you know, that kind of thing. So those will change as we go along, probably not a lot for the first year, because we envision that these are some pretty solid tactics that we'll be performing in our economic development strategic plan. So, if you...
Just if you're, you know, I'll make a couple of points here, that you'll see in red, the each goal that's established, we have three priorities, this is similar to the countywide strategic plans, we have three priorities for economic development, economic and community development, focused on infrastructure, traded sector, economic development in rural Lane County. And then the goals listed under each of these, we've talked about before, so these are not, I don't think any of this should be new to the Board, these, many of these items are already in the works, but we've identified how each of these goals correspond to each of the Board's established countywide priorities. And as we go forward and we do, we develop department strategic plans, we're doing this in economic vitality, we're doing county administration, Health and Services obviously has the chip, Public Works and Information Services and Management Services are working through that process. We will identify how each of the priorities and goals within the department strategic plans roll up into the countywide strategic plan to make sure that there's good linkage there. So that's, hopefully that provides some context and understanding for you. The other thing that I would just note here is, as we've talked previously with the Board on a number of issues, we've talked about the Glenwood project, we've talked about Goshen and many other economic development and redevelopment projects that will require some investment, public or private, and/or private investment for infrastructure improvements, that with the limited resources we have available, in particularly in our video lottery, our video lottery funds, as well as our transient room taxes, that are dedicated for economic community development and tourism investments, that we have brought forward to the Board and sought direction, and I think that our intent is to move forward and begin to shift from making investments that could be viewed as incentives for business recruitment, retention and recruitment and expansion, which has been, I think, hugely successful for Lane County over the past couple of years, around $1.2 million invested from video lottery funds, I believe alone, and something in the range of 1,200 jobs, plus or minus during that period of time that we've been able to generate in traded sector-focused industries that raise the median income and, you know, are smaller businesses that have wonderful growth opportunities. So that's been, we believe, a positive priority and investment, but with these redevelopment, economic development and redevelopment projects that are in the works, and many of the discussions that we have already had, and we believe the direction that the Board has provided us, we are prepared to now shift at looking at making investments in those public infrastructure projects. So I just wanted to highlight that. That is one thing that we're prepared to do, and I think we'd like to hear the Board's feedback on that, that as we go forward, you may see, if this is your direction, less, fewer recommendations coming forward with incentives for business relocation, retention and expansion, and more discussions on bigger picture, larger investments in public infrastructure projects for redevelopment of areas that we've talked about, Glenwood and Goshen and others.
Yes, and these would be infrastructure-related projects that assist the county and rural communities in their economic development efforts. And so, you know, whether it's, you know, upgrading sewer, water infrastructure, that kind of thing, and there are things that are critical infrastructures to update that economic development plan for our communities. Glenwood is a prime example of infrastructure, the Glenwood Refinement Plan, as we explore ways to help with that, Oprah test and infrastructure needs coming on, and, you know, as does Benita and Junction City and some of those other communities, so.
Thank you.
No questions?
Questions from, for staff, from the Board? Sure. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glenda, I like this format laid out there, and it talks about the areas of interest. I think you've captured most of them. The only thought that I've had in, kind of quickly looking at this, is you got some partnerships listed here, like partnerships with Cascade West Council Governments, but yet I don't see, should we maybe create an additional box or another page that really talks about the folks that we partner with? Is there value in listing the Lane Economic Committee, LEC? Is there value in the Regional Solutions Center? Should there be a mention, if we're talking about infrastructure, you know, the ACT and the NPO really are committees in a body that directs infrastructure investments that could help move these things forward? Should we try to incorporate a little bit more inclusiveness of who we're partnering with and what they bring to the table, and then directly tie them to the actions that we're trying to complete? Would that be helpful, or would that be maybe too much information and confusing?
We absolutely can do that. We do have such a list, I don't have ACT and NPO on that list. However, we ran out of room on the one-pager, so happy to add an additional page and add all of our partners. We are really focused on a regional economic development effort, so our partners run far and wide, and happy to provide that list.
I think I've shared with you privately, but I share publicly with you that when we talk about the rural component here, I've had some informal conversations with several city managers in East Lane County that, you know, they struggle with the fact that they have limited staff and too much work for those minutes, I think typical, more work than the limited staff could do. And if they had a body that they could be a part of, so hypothetically, if we got to a point where we decided that it's important to have one very active rural economic development person, they might be that, and they can see the benefit in it, that they would help participate in paying for that position. So maybe a city might contribute $10,000 to being a part of that person's work plan to take that 10% of their time and focus on their community and the economic development areas that they want to see take place, but yet there's other, you know, instead of... So I'm saying that I think there's more partnerships that could be established if we deem that that would be a valuable venture to look at, which I'm kind of plugging for because, as I said, I think there's lots of opportunities that are going by us because we just, we just don't have enough personal capital or employee, employees to actually say, "Hey, here's a great opportunity for a relocation of a business in Benita," but who's coordinating, who's helping, who's coordinating, who's having the conversation and say, "This is the great place for you to locate." It could be you on a specific day, but...
Yes, yes.
No, those days, you're very busy yourself, so...
Yeah, yes, that's true. Sarah and I are quite busy. We have a contract employee, I think you all probably know Kathy Baker, that does some of the research work for us, and, you know, she keeps tabs on the facilities and land availabilities and that kind of thing. What we have been lacking is something that we've wanted for quite some time, and that's a rural liaison, somebody that is dedicated to the rural communities. And we do have a great relationship with those rural communities, and we are working with them on development of community profile materials and that sort of thing. We've just finished Crestwell's materials, looks really great, we're moving on to Florence next. And so that takes a little time, and we are spread thinly. We do have the South limit, what is it, South Limit Economic Development Corporation, I'm trying not to use the acronym because people don't like that. And so with the, you know, as that comes online and becomes more of an active corporation, I certainly foresee the ability to be able to build on that partnership and actually get people out there into the rural communities on a regular basis, and looking forward to that.
Okay, well, I hope that's the case. I was, and maybe I've just been hearing bits and pieces, but I kind of felt like this new South Limit Economic Development Company was going to be more really centric to the urban area and not have a lot of focus outside in the rural areas, so hopefully I'm mistaken by the comments, but, you know, I just feel like if there was some dedicated liaison or a person that was definitely dedicated with their priorities on those rural communities, trying to bring opportunities to them, could bear fruit, no guarantees, but I would like to see if we could make it go.
Sure. One of the things about the new organization that I see, I don't necessarily see that they will be the ones that will be bringing up time to get out to the rural communities. What is occurring now and has occurred for a few years now is that Sarah and I provide backup and we fill the gaps for that organization to, you know, whether it's responding to state leads, you know, working with local communities, that kind of thing. And so as that organization comes onto line, they will naturally take a lot of that back, which will free up the county staff time to be able to get out there in those rural communities. I, many of you know that John Lively is currently heading up as economic development specialist at, I really want to say SWEDCO, but people don't like that, the South Limit Economic Development Corporation. And so his very last day will be January 30th, but then at the end of the legislative session, we plan to have somebody in place to jurisdictions, hope to have somebody in place to actually lead that organization, at which time I would, I plan to bring John Lively back into the Lane County fold and have him really work on implementing a rural economic development program with me, so.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glenda, really appreciate this, this is, I think it's good information, but I'd like to ask you a question under the column, Traded Sector Economic Development. As you go down, it says, "Item 5, Conduct Exploratory Research in the Local Materials and Textiles Industry." Can you maybe provide maybe a garden variety thought on the, on maybe what that would entail here locally, I guess, from lack of a better word here?
Sure, absolutely. As you, as we go back and we think about the, our first exploration into the food and beverage industry, it was a grassroots effort and, you know, we really had a lot of faith that there was going to be a ground swell and that this is something that the economic development team should really focus on. And we were right, we rode that wave right in there and were leaders in that industry, and it's just doing great. And so as Sarah and I have been, you know, exploring and researching other avenues to do something similar, what we don't want to do is compete with our partners on their projects or what they see as a great economic development tool. We want to be unique, we want to pull our rural communities into this and really focus on what we see the next up-and-coming industry cluster to be. And so we're not giving up on food by any means, but as we look around the state, the next progression is the textile industry, the natural resource-based textiles, apparel, you know, we've kind of coined a few terms that we kind of like, you know, farm to fashion, there's one that I'd like to steal, it's ranch to runway. And so as you look around here in Lane County and around the state, there are many, many opportunities to build this industry. And, you know, if we modeled, you know, some of our incentive programs and that kind of thing after North Carolina and what they've done, if you get into North Carolina and you look at what they've done in other states, the natural progression from the food and beverage industry is the textile and apparel industry. And so we've spoken with Bob Parker, we've said, you know, "Is there some way you can do something similar to the food and the local market analysis that we did, which is considered around many states as, you know, the book to go to? Can you do something like that for us?" And so he's considering what it would take to do that with the materials and textile industry, so. How's that for an example?
No, I think that's, it's interesting because I think it really started back in the, maybe in the late 60s or so, in the 70s, the textile industry in particular, it really went offshore. So is this something that you see as maybe potentially coming back?
It is coming back, yes.
Okay, that's, I would agree with that, then. I think we're in a pretty good position here, especially right on the Pacific Ocean and right on the I-5 corridor. I think, because traded sector, to me, that's how Oregon's going to continue to be successful in economic development. And the other piece is item 6, and it's Partner with Workforce and Regional Innovation Training Program. I think that is going to be so important moving forward. One of the things I do like to point out, when in our census, if you look at the census from 2000 to 2010, that age group of, it goes clear down to five, but all the way up to 19, 20 years old, around there, we have less today in Lane County than we did in 2000. And so I think any way we can invest in that workforce, to invest in talent, so that our youth do not feel like there's, there is an opportunity here, that they can stay here if they wish, and then instead of continuing constantly moving on, because I think that's what's going on. You have so many in our youth that once they hit that age of either high school, college, they're looking for the opportunities here, they can't find them, and they leave. And I think we're, so I like, I think that's critical moving forward. I don't want to see our population increase based on the fact that people from out of state are moving here at the age of 60-plus, and that, I don't think that benefits us. I think what benefits us in the long run is making sure that opportunities are created that our youth feel like they can stay here, and hopefully that's where the population will continue to increase. So I think that's good information, I really appreciate the overall, it's very, very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to say, I really appreciate the report, and I will mention that we're already the leader in the nation in baseball caps.
Yes, we are.
Textile, isn't it?
Yes, it is. So we already have our foot in the door, in fashion.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say something about the fashion component of this. I think Commissioner Stewart was on the Board, and I was on the Board at the time when we did a tour of innovative businesses in the community, and one of the places that the Board visited was over on approximately Fifth and Monroe in Eugene, near Blair, where Blair, Monroe and, and, more like...
Fourth Street.
Seventh, a little further, further south, but south of Seventh. And a couple of women were running a dress shop, and they had received some economic development funding from somebody, I'm not really sure who, but that business developed into a big success. And it was a relatively small amount of economic development money going into it, and it was just the jumpstart that they needed. And I think they are, those two women that were there are among the earlier of the businesses that are emphasizing fashion in Eugene. And I think that they actually started, maybe the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce started a Fashion Week, like, you know, Fashion Week in Paris or Milan, well, they have Eugene Fashion Week, I think. And I don't know when it is, but it's an example of how this sector is really growing. It's artistic, it's practical, it's business, and it really is something that I think trades on some of the real success points in economic development. So I just wanted to add that. As far as what we're making in terms of the actual product, I, those baseball caps, and I think that is a good example of a commercial product that's made here... and I think that is a good example of a commercial product that's made here and is designed here, but the actual raw material for the baseball cap, I think, is brought in.
It probably is.
Yeah.
I do have some great articles that I could share with you about a sheep ranch in Oregon that provided the wool for the uniforms for the Olympics, and great work that's being done, and there are a lot of those opportunities here, that the product does come here. And, you know, I will tell you that we get many calls for people who are wanting to launch their marijuana industry business here, and then a lot of people are saying, well, there's, you know, hemp, and the clothing that you can make from hemp, and then, you know, it's just, it's, there's a lot. There's, you know, whether it's tinsel, which is wood products, base fabrics and textiles, there's a lot of things that we do have here in a natural resource base.
Commissioner Farr?
You know, there are a host of businesses like Celery that have happened in town, or small investments by the city of Eugene that have caused small companies to get bigger just based upon a little bit of money that's been seeded. You're doing the same thing on a regular basis, and I'm really pleased to see the direction that you're going with that. As I stated last night, it's one of the high points of my year as the chair of the county commission, is watching how our economic development department has grown, has strengthened and really spread out. I'm really, particularly in favor of the food hub, I think that's a natural for Lane County. You know, I'm from Sheffield in England, there's a little city called, to the north, called Leeds, that flourished on textiles. Leeds is the sixth largest city in England, and it's, you know, textiles were very big for the Midlands of England. Then that was production of the product, rather than, production of the linen, rather than, rather than actually designing and making the finished product. But the one thing that I wanted to really point out is that I love this document, absolutely love this document. I took a photograph of it.
Okay.
It's on my computer, and it'll be spread out around, because this is really well done, and look forward to seeing it online. And what I really like about it, Mr. Mokrheyski, is the fact that you've tied everything into our strategic plan. In red, you pointed out, how does that fit into the strategic plan, which really reinforces the fact that all of our departments are working together in the same direction to make certain that what we have agreed upon as a strategic plan, the goal areas, the strategies, and as we boil down to the tactics, is something that we're working on as a county, and it's not just something that hangs out, it is something that we do, and it's something that we document in the documents that we produce. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, thank you very much, Glenda. Really appreciate your work here, and we're looking forward to hearing from you often this year about new opportunities.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
So with that, we'll move on to Commissioner's business. Any announcements? Commissioner Lichen?
Just one announcement, and tonight, 5:30 at Wildus Theater, Mayor Lombard will be giving her a State of the City address. I know that's kind of plastered around the media, but just to remind the board that that will happen 5:30 at Wildus Theater.
Commissioner Sorenson?
The University of Oregon Duck football team is playing for the national championship next Monday night, and I'd like to compliment everyone for wearing green or perhaps hidden greenish tinged ties in celebration of this event. This truly is a phenomenal thing for our community, and not only for the university, but really for everybody in Lane County and in Oregon, so I'm just really excited about this. And I want to also thank our former chair, who did a great job last night. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Farr?
You know, just point out a little bit of revisionist history, revisionist history, only two of us are wearing green, as far as ties are concerned. One is actually wearing blue, and one is, looks a lot like Florida State or USC colors, and one certainly has the tint of Tennessee or some other school. I'm not sure which. Thank you.
So I don't have any real announcements, other than that we are in contact with Franklin County and trying to work out a little side wager between commissions to see if we can have something at risk here on next Monday night's game. And it will all be legal and less than the dollar amounts and all that, but I believe we're talking about baskets of local products. Easy for us to come up with all that, we were just talking about our wonderful food sector and local products here. So I'm not quite sure what the local products are of Franklin County.
Dried corn.
I'm kind of thinking one of those hat companies could provide some really nice UVO hat.
Yeah.
So, and I just, I really...
Can you eat Buckeyes?
I don't know.
Can you smoke Buckeyes?
So we'll probably be hearing more about that in the near future. Other announcements from the board? I'll just real quick remind folks that we do have a meeting tomorrow. I'll mention that again when we adjourn, but tomorrow at 9 o'clock, out in Public Works off of Delta Highway there, I think it's 30, 40, Delta Highway, North Delta Highway, in the Goodson Room. It is open to the public, it is a work session, notice there won't be public participation, but it's probably one of the most fascinating meetings for the public to attend because it's when we hear our first projections for our budget for the upcoming budget year, and the board makes its direction, some direction, or agrees with the direction of staff of where they're going in preparing the budget for the next fiscal year. So it's an interesting meeting, and anyone that wants to attend might want to show up at Public Works off in the Goodson Room. So any agenda team requests or work session requests from the board? Seeing done, then, I guess we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene tomorrow morning, January 7th, at 9:00 AM in the Goodson Room, Public Works.
Well, within three hours.